Yeah, okay.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call together the City Council Work Session for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. A roll call, please, Sue.
I'm Counselor McBride.
Here.
Uh, Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Uh, Counselor Finley.
Here.
Uh, Counselor Martinez Plankarke.
Present.
Counselor Cofield.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Present.
And I'm not seeing Elise. Sorry, I didn't get my minutes open time to do it that way. Um. I guess I need to call attendance for Planning Commission, too.
Yeah, and so we'll get Chair Musal to to open the planning.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the Planning Commission portion of the joint meeting with the City Council of March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. And can we get a roll call of the Planning Commission, please?
Oh, my cheat sheet. Um, Sharon Capri.
Here.
Robert Sherry.
Here.
Charles Avon.
Here.
Jeffrey Musall.
Yeah.
Jenna Morris.
Here.
Colin Bullock.
Here.
Jason Dale. Uh, not seeing Jason and Chris Wright. Okay, did I miss anyone? No, okay.
All right. Well, thank you. I guess at this point, we will turn this over to staff and oh, wait, sorry, strike that council agenda and meeting this evening. Anyone, any comments regarding the agenda for the business session? Okay, seeing none. All right, let's go on to joint works up on middle housing and introducing Mr. Doug Rux.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilors, Commission members. So this evening, we're here to do our joint work session in regards to House Bill two thousand and one, the duplex portion. Uh, tonight, we will not be talking about triplexes and quads and cottage clusters and townhomes, just on the duplex portion. Uh, that's the piece that we have to have completed by the end of June of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, so with us tonight, we have Elizabeth Decker with Jet Planning. Uh, Elizabeth's been doing a lot of the heavy lifting. Uh, three gate, uh, three J Consulting is our lead consultant. Um, they are not with us tonight, and Elizabeth gets to carry all the weight on her shoulders to walk through the presentation, but she's very versed in the issues of duplex. Uh, regulations per the new House Bill. Um, so as we go through this presentation, uh, if you do have questions, please let us know. Um, sometimes if you try to hold on to the questions, you forget after, you know, twenty or thirty minutes. And Elizabeth and I talked about that earlier today, so we have no problem stopping answering your questions. If you choose to hold your questions to the end, we will have that Q and A opportunity to walk through it. I know Commissioner Capri brought up on our Planning Commission meeting last week, um, some issues about some development in Sherwood related to parking. She did send me some photos today, so we have put those into a PowerPoint as well. And when we get to that Q and A portion at the end of the discussion, we can pull that up, and she can articulate what she was seeing based on that particular development. So with that, I will turn it over to Elizabeth.
Right. Good evening, City Council and Planning Commission. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. As Doug mentioned, I am Elizabeth Decker with Jet Planning. Um, and my niche specialty is writing zoning code, so this is just, you know, an exciting opportunity for me that, uh, to be here with you, sharing some of the details that we've put into the zoning code that's going to help implement, um, the duplex requirements, um, and hopefully expand some housing opportunities in the city of Newburgh. Um, so let me get this presentation started and share with you the process that we've been on, um, and what we are going to be bringing to you. Right. Um, so as Doug mentioned, this project is part of, you know, a bigger look at expanding housing options. Um, and we're looking at updating the zoning code specifically. We're very much aware that there are pieces outside of zoning code that impact what gets built, um, both city policies as well as, you know, market factors and, you know, development preferences and consumer preferences and, uh, but we're really looking at the zoning code right now, um, to help open up some opportunities to address Newburgh's housing needs. Um, the whole project focuses on duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters. Um, we're hoping to build, um, design this to build on the momentum of the recently adopted housing needs analysis, uh, and also to comply with the state requirements, um, coming in the form of House Bill two thousand and one for middle housing. Okay, and we have been working on this, um, gosh, it feels like longer, but since August of last year. Um, and we have had a busy slate of meetings with our Community Advisory Committee, um, and public workshops over the course of the fall and winter coming to you today. Um, and then we'll be wrapping up with this portion of the project, um, including adoption of the duplex standards by the end of June this year. Okay, so there were three primary components, um, that our project included. The first was a code audit to identify what opportunities already existed in the code and what improvements and changes were needed in order to comply with HB two thousand and one and generally to expand housing options. Um, so this first piece is the duplex code updates, and we're preparing those as a separate package of code, um, that needs to meet the regulatory deadline of June two thousand and twenty-one. And then Newburgh has chosen to go above and beyond the requirements, um, of HB two thousand and one, and looking to incorporate standards for other middle housing, for those triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters. Um, and those, based on the size of the city of Newburgh, those are not yet triggered as mandatory requirements for the city. Um, so the city is voluntarily doing that, and those will proceed on a separate adoption timeline, um, in the fall later this year. Um, so we have, you know, within the limits of COVID, um, we have found new and virtual ways, um, to engage with the community throughout this project. Um, as I mentioned, we have a citizen advisory committee, um, that met with us five times, and they helped, um, give us input into both the concepts as we developed them, as well as some of the code specifics, um, the Moors, um, targeted this project got in the process. Um, and they provided a recommendation on both portions of the code, um, that, uh, including the duplexes that we'll be talking about tonight. Um, we also hosted two open house meetings, um, virtual online open houses for the public, um, and had some good attendance and questions that way. Uh, and then, but our primary, um, you know, response from the general public were two online surveys that were paired with the open house. Um, so we got hundreds of responses to the first online survey. The second survey, um, was a little bit more detailed, a little bit more policy wonky, um, and just closed this weekend, and we got about seventy-odd responses to that one. So, um, we used the online survey as well as our citizen advisory committee, as well as, you know, the state requirements, and sort of put all those pieces together to help shape the recommendation in front of you. Um, you know, the surveys are certainly not, you know, a scientifically valid survey. It's really just whoever was interested in responding. Um, so we, we got some interesting feedback that way, and, um, a lot of it was on common themes around a desire to see more housing options that are more affordable, um, not necessarily regulated affordable housing, but just home prices, you know, that are a little bit lower than what's on the market right now, so that more families and more households can access them. Um, but there's also different concerns that we're hearing through the survey, um, and, you know, other engagement with the public about how to manage parking impacts and the scale of those units that might come along with expanding housing options. All right, so any questions there before we get into some of the details? As Doug promised, we want to give you lots of opportunities to, to get the most out of your work session tonight. Okay, well, let's talk a little bit about the basics of middle housing, um, which, you know, I don't know, there's something in the water, right? It's going around in Oregon, um, around the region, even around the country, looking at new ways to provide housing options. Um, and as it turns out, these are really new old ways. Uh, in terms of, you know, this, about ten years ago, we started calling this missing middle housing because it hadn't been built for the past seventy-five years or so. Uh, middle housing is, you know, a traditional alternative to single-family detached and multifamily apartments, giving you some options in the middle, um, hence the name. Um, I, I think we can, you know, drop the word missing right now. Middle housing is really, um, having a moment, um, and we're really hoping that with these code updates and other policy pieces, it's going to be less missing. And the idea is that, um, it's middle housing in terms of coming in the middle of the intensity of these, you know, the multifamily and the single family on one end, um, which makes the units smaller in scale and less expensive and with more variety. Um, so these aren't, you know, we're looking at a whole variety of things from duplexes to cottages to townhouses. These are not necessarily, you know, uh, what am I trying to say? Again, they're not regulated affordable housing, um, but they're just looking for a different variety, different scale of units, um, that can meet the, you know, needs of a broader segment of the community. Um, so some common forms of middle housing that we've spent a lot of time talking about, certainly duplexes, and then duplexes or triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters. Um, and House Bill two thousand and one was Oregon's, um, response, was Oregon's, um, effort to support middle housing and by requiring it in communities across the state. Um, so the first point, or the first prong of HB two thousand and one passed in twenty nineteen, requires that all cities over ten thousand people, which, you know, includes Newburgh, um, that duplexes be permitted on all lots where single-family detached dwellings are permitted. So, another trivia question, anybody want to, um, take a guess as to what Newburgh's current population is?
Twenty-four, five?
Very close. I think we're at twenty-four, seven?
Oh.
They are at.
I would buy Price is Right rules.
Yeah.
So we're at twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty as of last July first.
Doug wins. Okay, um. Great. So that means that we are clear, that Newburgh is clearly in the duplex camp. Um, but then the next, um, piece of HB two thousand and one applies to triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters be permitted in areas where single-family detached dwellings are allowed. So that, the distinction is it's not necessarily on every lot, but it's in every neighborhood. And that kicks in when a city reaches twenty-five thousand people. So Newburgh is very close. Um, but the city's chosen to, you know, be proactive in developing these standards and looking at housing options, but that's why that's in the second part, um, the second package of code amendments. Um, and the bill, as well as our code amendments specific for Newburgh, is really focused on how middle housing can be included as both new construction, so, you know, ground-up development, um, as well as, additions and conversions of existing housing. So, you know, say you have an existing home, you want to expand it, or you want to, you know, drop a line down the middle, uh, a new wall, and these homes could be built both in an infill scenario where it's, you know, a single lot within an established neighborhood, as well as, you know, in cities like Newburgh that have, um, some great new neighborhoods planned, um, they could be integrated right from the ground up as part of that neighborhood master planning. Okay, um, so the state went through a very lengthy, um, but, you know, robust rulemaking process over the summer, um, culminating in the adoption in November, um, of some very specific, um, uh, regulations to translate sort of the general HB two thousand and one standards, um, into direction and requirements for cities. So there's basically two paths that the city of Newburgh can consider. There are the minimum compliance standards, um, that are adopted in the Oregon Administrative Rules, and those are exactly how they sound. As long as you meet the minimums, you are in compliance. Um, and then they also, you know, sort of as a, as a carrot, they came up with this model code that, that meets or exceeds the minimum compliance for the different housing types. Um, and, you know, sort of meant as a plug-and-play. Um, there's some specific code language that, you know, can be copied and pasted, but a lot of it is, you know, it's just sort of a guide. Um, it's really how we've been using it. So the CAC, um, in their work directed us to look at both of these paths. Um, and as we get into some of the specifics of the code, I'll talk about where we picked minimum compliance and where we picked model code. Um, as we're looking across the city of Newburgh, um, you know, as we said, duplexes, um, need to be permitted on every lot where single-family detached dwellings are permitted. Um, so that means that we're having impacts in all the residential zones, um, essentially any yellow tones that you see on this map, right? We've got our R one, R two, and R three zones, right, and increasing density. Um, the RP Residential Professional and the AR, very small airport residential zone. Um, so we will be looking at all of those. Um, and you can see, you know, some of the, around the edges of this map, um, that some of these residential zones are within areas that have been master planned. So that just adds a fun complication to how we write the zoning code, but the intent is the same. We treat all residential areas the same. Um, when we talk, you know, as I mentioned, these master plans for, um, Springbrook is probably going to see the majority of the, the changes with this package, um, but also the riverfront, um, master plan, uh, Northwest Newburgh, Springbrook Oaks, and the airport residential. Um, and again, the, the direction is pretty simple for duplexes that we're going to permit residential, we're going to permit duplexes on every lot where a single-family detached dwelling could have been, um, is otherwise permitted. So any questions before we get into the specifics of the code updates? Okay, well, let's just launch into it then. Um, in terms of, you know, big picture, what the, the code updates with all their sections and subsections and tables and, you know, cross-references are attempting to accomplish. Um, primary concepts, we started with amending the duplex dwelling definition, um, so that we're allowing, um, sort of one of the, the innovations that came in the model code, um, was around the flexibility to allow attached or detached configurations. So whether you, um, you know, a traditional duplex where the units are stuck together or, um, separated on the same lot, and then we used that term consistently throughout the code, you know, sort of a code writing nicety. Um, you know, thinking back to that map, we made sure that duplexes were permitted use in all of the Rs, the residential R zones. Um, and then within those zones, I think the key was making sure that duplexes are allowed on the same size lots of single-family detached dwellings. So in some of those lots before duplexes were permitted, um, but you needed to have a larger lot size, which, you know, made it more difficult to find a lot that qualified or to, you know, assemble a large enough lot that could support a duplex. Um, but on those lots, you know, the idea being that we're going to treat these duplex structures very similarly to how we treat single-family detached dwellings. Um, so the proposed code applies the same existing setbacks, lot coverage and height standards for duplexes in those zones. Um, so, you know, you can build the same structure, and it's your choice whether you want to divide it inside, um, into one unit or two units. And we did have, we did take a look at the parking requirements, and based on the minimum compliance, um, what we needed to do is change parking to one per dwelling unit or two per duplex. Um, and then we made some adjustments to the driveway spacing to try to make everything fit a little bit better on the lots. Okay, so let's talk in detail about what some of that is going to mean. First of all, just want to acknowledge that, you know, how these are related to ADUs. Um, if you're a savvy code person, which I'm sure all of you are, um, you might be scratching your head and thinking, well, how is, you know, a duplex, which is two dwelling units, or, and, you know, a home and an ADU, which is also two dwelling units, how are those different? Um, and the answer is that there is a good deal of overlap. Um, and so the city of Newburgh has really strong ADU standards, and we've already done a lot of work on those to get those up to, um, up to snuff, shall we say, to meet all the applicable state regulations. And so this project doesn't propose any changes to the ADU standards. It just clarifies that applicants have two choices. They can either proceed as a duplex, or they can do a single-family dwelling with an ADU. Um, but in total, you can't have more than two dwelling units per lot. Um, so whichever one works better for you, um, for a particular site in terms of the relative size of the units, I think that's really the, the biggest difference, is that if you want to have a duplex, um, you can have two units that are effectively the same size, um, as opposed to a single-family dwelling and an accessory dwelling. The accessory dwelling has to be a lot smaller. Um, so this sort of depends on the relationship and, and what you're hoping to do with your site. Okay. Um, so when we talk about what some of the details of this code, taking those concepts and translating them into language, um, as I mentioned, you know, one of the first pieces was we changed the definitions. Um, and this isn't just because, you know, we like to get the dictionary off the shelf and add things to the, you know, Oxford English Dictionary. Uh, it's because the definitions really control what the options are. Um, so as I mentioned, the, the code changes, um, allow a variety of attached configurations. So you could have a stacked duplex, one on top of the other. Um, you could have side-by-side, um, you know, where it's almost like two townhouses, um, except that they're, they're sharing a property. Um, you could also attach the units by a breezeway or a garage wall. Um, and, you know, this attached umbrella is, is the more traditional understanding of duplexes. Um, but we also expanded the definition to allow these detached options, so that you could have them side-by-side or one in front of the other. Um, and just adds a little flexibility in terms of the site, and, you know, if there's enough site area to do this and maintain the, the required fire separation between the units, could be a preferred form for some, you know, builders or some families in the future, uh, provides a little bit more, you know, space and privacy. So, um, you know, it'll be interesting to see, uh, what, what choices become the most popular, but this is just a, an additional flexibility that we're adding into the code. Uh, here's an example of a detached duplex that was built. Um, and then as we talk about permitting duplexes, you know, again, um, basically single-family detached dwellings and duplexes are now linked. Um, so anywhere where a single family is permitted, um, in all these R zones, um, you're also going to have a duplex dwelling permitted. And so this actually is not a change to the current code. Um, the, the duplexes are already permitted, but the change has to do with the minimum lot sizes. Um, so right now, we are not proposing any changes to the minimum lot sizes for single-family detached, and those range from three thousand to five thousand square feet, depending on lot size. And um, I understand there's already been some work at the community level and some analysis done, you know, as part of earlier housing work, um, about maximizing those efficiencies and, you know, those lot sizes are, are pretty, um, pretty, uh, what's the right word? You know, robust. Um, you know, I think that makes sense in terms of supporting a, supporting housing variety. Um, and so what we're doing is we're using those same lot sizes now for duplexes. Um, and so the previous minimum lot sizes, you had to have twice as large a lot for a duplex, which, you know, I'm not a builder or a developer, but I'm just going to imagine that selling a duplex on one lot is not going to make you as much money as selling two single-family homes on two lots. So, um, you know, it makes it a little bit pro. Um, there's a lot of disincentives to building a duplex under the previous rules. Um, so we've revised it, um, and this is directly implementing the model code and minimum compliance, um, has to be the same size lot for duplexes and single family. Um, and one thing that we did look at was reducing the lot size in the R three zone. Um, and we, right now, it's three thousand square feet, and we consider, does it make sense to allow, you know, given that that's the highest density district, um, that three thousand square foot for a duplex, now that we've lowered it in the R one and the R two and the RP and the AR, does it make sense to, to keep it the same, or should there be some additional incentive um, to sort of maintain this, uh, density, um, you know, tapering, um, so that the R three can be more dense than some of the other zones? Um, so we consider changing that three thousand square feet proposal, or that, the three thousand square foot minimum lot size for single-family and duplexes in the R three zone. Uh, we looked at two thousand square feet, twenty-five hundred square feet, as well as, um, keeping it at three thousand. Um, and the draft code, um, that is recommended by Citizen, the CAC, um, you know, we picked the number in the middle. We went with twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, but we'll also be, you know, curious to get your feedback as we move through the adoption process on that, but that's the proposal. Um, and then lot sizes, you know, wind up correlating, wind up having, you know, um, wind up driving density. And so one thing that's interesting about the way the Newburgh code is structured is that the code doesn't set maximum or minimum densities, um, directly. What it sets is a density target for each of these zones. Um, and that's expressed in dwelling units per gross acre, which, you know, also adds just sort of a, a whole fudge factor. No, that's not fair. Um, it just adds sort of a, an averaging factor, right? Because when you're looking at gross acres, that means that you're accounting for any natural features, environmental areas that are set aside, as well as, um, land use for public improvements. Um, you know, so the actual number of dwelling units, there's not as much buildable land, um, in a gross acre. And so this, the city code sets these density targets, um, and because they are not minimums or maximums, um, we, the direction that we're going with this code update is to keep those density targets the same. Um, the idea behind this middle housing is that it will be incremental. Um, you know, it's not going to cause a doubling of density overnight with every single lot choosing to be developed as a duplex. Um, so we think that those targets are still going to help guide overall development. Uh, but, you know, in the long term, every couple of years, every five years, uh, future H and A work, you're probably going to want to go back and revisit those and, and see if they still make sense. Um, but hopefully, um, the duplexes and additional housing types being proposed will help the city get closer to meeting its overall density targets. So we're hoping that this will be a benefit. Um, and that those targets will still, you know, be an accurate guide for, for development. Okay, in terms of the dimensional standards and defining that building envelope of what can be built where, um, we aren't proposing any changes to the dimensional standards. So, you know, as I said, you can build the same box for either a single-family detached dwelling or, or for a duplex. So we, let's see, the height is going to remain the same at thirty feet, um, in the R one, R two, RP, and AR zones, and it's forty-five feet in R three. Um, and one piece that we looked for feedback from both our public open house and our CAC was about increasing the height to thirty-five feet in, um, everything except the R one low-density zone. Um, and the idea being there that, that the R two, RP, and AR zones, you know, are a little bit more intense, and there could be um, a middle step between this thirty feet and the forty-five feet, um, that's allowed in the higher-density zone. Also, looking at, you know, thirty feet really permits more of a, a two to two-and-a-half-story development, you know, like more of an attic or, um, you know, half-story sort of tucked into the eaves, but thirty-five feet, particularly on sites with some slope, allows for, you know, actual three-story construction, um, could be useful in some scenarios. So, um, ultimately, the recommendation from the CAC was to, um, include that thirty-five feet, um, for recommendation for those zones. So that is the one change that we're recommending. Um, the building lot coverage is remaining the same at forty percent for R one, fifty percent in all the other zones. Um, and then the setbacks stay the same. Twelve to fifteen in the front, five to eight in the interior, you know, for the side and the rear. Uh, and of course, the garages are set back farther than that, so that there's room for a car to park in the driveway. Which brings us to parking standards, um, which we certainly spent a lot of time talking about from, with both the public and, um, questions that we asked in the survey, as well as with our, um, with the CAC. Um, so the direction that came out of that state rulemaking process, um, was the choices they gave cities were that, um, the, the maximum minimum requirement, meaning that the most parking that cities could require, um, what for duplexes was one space per unit or two spaces total per duplexes. Um, you know, they gave cities the option, and the model code encouraged cities to bring that down farther, to bring it down to zero spaces per unit, or say, one space total per duplex, uh, and/or to allow on-street parking to count towards these minimums. Uh, and we, you know, considered that model code, as well as this, the minimum compliance of, of one space per unit, um, in discussion, and we got a pretty clear direction from CAC, um, to move forward with the maximum amount of parking that could be required, which is this one space per unit. Um, and so the two spaces total per duplex create, you know, create parity as, um, with the requirements for a single-family detached. So if you build a single-family detached on a lot, you have to provide two off-street parking spaces, and it'll be the same for duplexes. So hopefully, that will help with development feasibility in terms of how many off-street parking spaces can fit on, you know, a lot this size. Um, in looking at that, though, and thinking about, you know, how can we maximize the utility of that, and how can we provide some, some site layout flexibility? Um, you know, one thing that we can't do is require certain parking configurations, such as garages or carports specifically for duplexes. Um, but we did want to make it possible, um, to provide parking in a garage, um, or a carport or driveway, um, through some changes to the access standards, um, so that there could be some flexibility there, um, for developers. And I'll also just say, you know, when we're talking about how these sites get developed, um, you know, You know, the actual number of parking spaces that will be built on the site is up to the builder and the developer. And so the city just sets a minimum, you know, as it's been with single-family detached, the minimum is two spaces. And that includes garage as well as driveway spaces, but we've all seen plenty of, you know, develop plenty of homes that are built with more than the minimum. So we'll be looking to see how this evolves as as duplexes get built. And and what kind of provision of parking actually winds up happening. But the city's role, you know, really is as constrained by this date here is just to set the minimum. But the piece that we did add was dealing with driveways. And so the current access standards that we discussed and worked through with the engineering division. Guarantee one driveway per lot and allow to win some minimum spacing can be met between those two driveways. And, you know, it also, of course, depends on what kind of road you're on. If it's a, you know, a busier arterial or collector street, then there needs to be, you know, fewer access points to reduce possible conflicts. However, when we're talking about, you know, local streets, residential, a couple of pieces that we look to add in. Right now, the, if you are going to have those two driveways, which, you know, could be useful on a duplex site. They have to be spaced forty feet apart, which means that, you know, even if you push them to the sides, you're looking at a pretty wide lot. In order to accommodate forty feet plus two driveways on either ends. So we took a look at that and in consultation with the engineering division, proposed changing that to twenty-two feet. And twenty-two feet still allows for pretty ample curb space. That's, you know, enough space for a generous on-street parking space. As well as some street trees to be planted, utility vaults, other things that need to go in in that, you know, curb frontage area. So that was our first proposal that could allow, you know, if if a site was interested to develop two separate driveways. And then also just to, you know, help with fitting that within the the minimum lot widths. Reducing the driveway width, the minimum down from twelve feet to ten feet. So if somebody wanted to build a single, single-wide driveway. You know, they could be a little bit narrower, you know, gives it a little bit more flexibility to fit in. But still plenty of area for, you know, maneuvering a single car. And then, oh, it looks like I forgot to add a slide or a bullet just to say, we also expanded the corner lot provisions. So that if a duplex is on a corner lot and both are local streets, that there could be an option to take one driveway off. Of each of those streets, just as as a way to separate the accesses. And then throughout all this, we're looking to maintain the on-street parking options. Because we're realistic that that is, you know, something that is used by a lot of the neighborhood. And it could be used by the residents of the duplexes as well. So, you know, that's partly why the spacing standards are set to keep parking on-street. Keep it, you know, long enough to be feasible. And we also got direction from the CAC. You know, as I mentioned, there was an option under the model code to allow on-street parking in front of the duplex to count towards the minimum requirements. And the direction we got that that was that that was not desirable because they wanted to, you know, maintain flexibility for the, with that on-street parking. And and make sure it could be utilized by a variety of folks in the neighborhood. Okay, so when I think about these driveway options, on the left, you see sort of a an attached configuration. Both of the duplexes as well as the driveways. I mean, not to reveal, you know, my super technical planning expertise. But, you know, when you do a quick Google image search, shall we say, for duplexes, this is certainly the most popular configuration that comes up. And I think, you know, you can imagine there's a lot of efficiencies in bringing the driveways together. Reducing the amount of pavement and driveway cuts. And also that the the shared wall then is minimized between living spaces. And you can get a lot of it taken care of just at the garage connection where shared noise or something like that is is less of a concern. So, you know, this option on the left would be one way that you could get your duplex built with. You know, parking that exceeds the minimum. In this case, you've got two garage spaces and two driveway spaces, so a total of four off-street parking spaces with just one curb cut. But, you know, on the right, you also see there, there could be some options if people wanted to separate the driveways. And, you know, just maintain a little bit more, I don't know, parking privacy for residents. And that's where the driveway spacing standards that we're talking about come in and and hopefully could permit either configuration, whatever works better for the site. And then the other piece that we needed to look at that was a pretty specific to Newburgh. Had to do with master plan areas. So as I mentioned, Newburgh has five different master plan areas. The city's really relied on this tool in terms of providing some long-range planning. And, you know, envisioning what areas can look like and how they can contribute to the city. It's it's sort of interesting just from a, you know, perspective of working in a lot of different communities. Normally, it's larger cities that are able to do this, so Newburgh's really been able to utilize some some complex and and forward-thinking planning here. But it did add some challenges to our our project in terms of code and thinking through. What the minimum compliance standards mean in these master plan areas. So, you know, the the whole backstory with the master plans at the at the state level was that they, you know, were trying to find a way to balance and respect. Long-term master planning, but also making sure that, you know, these areas don't become future exclusive neighborhoods. And that they sort of, you know, get off the hook from, you know, providing a mix of middle housing like every other neighborhood in the city. So as far as duplexes go, the direction is very simple for master plan areas. That we need to, you know, permit duplexes on every lot, just exactly the same as in other residential, residentially zoned areas. So there's some, you know, complicated code and plan amendments that need to happen in order to make that happen. Because there's sort of a mix of some some plan specifics, plan language, as well as the base zoning standards. Some of the plans just say, develop this area consistent with the R one zoning standards, you know, in the code. So that's pretty easy because we're, you know, adjusting the R one code standards. But it is just sort of a mix we needed to look at. Springbrook, Northwest Newburgh, Springbrook Oaks and Riverfront. And as you can see, we had a range of changes to make, including uses as well as some density standards. And design standards. So again, it's just all about creating parity between family detached and duplexes to make that happen. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the group and hear what questions you've got about any of the specifics. I can go back to any of these slides or bring it back to the the full discussion, whatever is, whatever is more helpful. Thank you.
All right, Elizabeth, thank you, thank you very much. All right, councilors, if you want to use the raise hand function, we'll start with city council for first cracks at questions. And then I'll switch over to the planning commissioners. Okay, Mike, I see your hands raised, please.
Yeah, so are are we basically, it sounds like we've we've always had the ability to put duplexes in neighborhoods. Because there's some scattered throughout the neighborhood where I live. But are we basically changing and going to smaller lot sizes? And different configurations of duplexes or triplexes? Is that basically in a nutshell what we're really kind of trying to change or modify?
Yeah, in a nutshell, we're trying to make sure that duplexes can be built on any existing lot. You know, where you could have a single-family detached right now.
So we never, so apparently we didn't have that in in our code or our ability?
So duplexes were permitted, you know, and I can't speak to some of the specific ones. It's possible they were built before some of the zoning code standards came in. But right now, if you wanted to build a duplex, you'd have to find a pretty large lot that's twice as large. As as the current minimum lot sizes in order to cite that duplex. So it'd be pretty hard to build a new duplex, say, in a new subdivision or, you know, a vacant lot that that came up. In an existing neighborhood, because the lots probably wouldn't be big enough.
All right, planning commissioners.
Sorry, real quick, Elizabeth, thank you.
Sorry, let's, let's. Hold on one second, let's, let's let planning commissioners have a go and then we'll circle back to council.
Oh, gosh, we're going back and forth, my bad.
Any planning commissioners have questions?
Right, all right, with that, I think you're on, Bryce.
My question's more trying to clarify, it seemed like one of the significant changes was reducing the the amount of space in between driveways from forty to twenty-two feet. Is that right? In the the picture you showed us, can you, where you have them side by side, the one that you'd reference on the left. To me, I thought what the way you're going to say, oh, previously, like, that couldn't work. And I was wondering if you could help me better understand than like how the one on the left does work? Because that looks like half an inch of concrete space in between the driveways, not necessarily twenty-two feet.
Oh, great, so this one on the left would work because this is technically one driveway for one lot. So yes, it does have sort of that expansion joint running down the middle and there's an invisible property line. If you've got your, you know, property line goggles on, or I'm sorry, that's not true. Forget that, there is no property line running down the middle, it's just an expansion joint in the concrete. And so it would technically be considered one driveway on one lot serving the duplex.
I see, okay, so in this case, if there is another sort of joint duplex, this one driveway would have to be twenty-two feet away from the other one. One driveway, even though they would be serving effectively like four units.
Great clarification, so. This spacing standard that we're talking about actually only affects driveways on a single lot. So the issue that we're not trying to regulate so much how driveways are spaced from one lot to the next lot. But we're trying to maximize the flexibility on an individual lot. So previously, well, currently, for that matter, because we haven't finalized these updates. Right now, if you wanted to do something like on the right, you could only put those two driveways on that lot. If you could achieve forty feet between those driveways, which is an awful lot of space to span, right? Plus, then you add on the the twelve feet per driveway, plus a little landscaping. And you're looking at a lot that is, you know, sixty to seventy feet wide. So what we're trying to do by changing that standard. It really, the option on the left is already permitted and will continue to be permitted and may indeed be a more popular option. But we're trying to add the option in the right to shrink that distance between the driveways. So that you could have two separate driveways, serving the two units on one lot. As far as where the driveways are for the adjacent lots, you know, each lot gets to sort of decide that on a lot-by-lot basis.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for asking that clarification, yeah.
But I'll wait so we can, you know, kick it back over to planning committee and all the other things came up.
Yeah, did we have anything on the commission side?
I would like to ask a question, actually. I know that. Consultations, I'll phrase it, with. City departments like the fire, like TVFNR usually come in the legislative process. But has there in the proposal process been any questions asked with TVFNR? Or is there any precedent in elsewhere in the state regarding fire code and duplexes? Because if I'm understanding this correctly, HB two thousand three, I believe it is, is somewhat new. I'm just wondering, what does the fire, what is the fire precedent look like on this?
Yeah, I think so. HB two thousand one, I I can't speak to, you know, how fire code has, you know, been involved in the process of developing it. But generally, fire code applies the same to single and duplex dwellings. So you're looking at the same standards. The the piece that really could come in is if someone were to do that detached duplex configuration we were talking about. And what kind of fire separation you would need between two detached units. So if there's any spacing or special construction requirements. So that's where an individual property owner would need to, you know, be coordinating with fire as well as with the zoning code.
Thank you.
Bryce.
Yeah, so I'm trying to, I'm looking at slide eleven, this was the best one that I could find that looked like we're outlining. Our one, our two, or three RP and ARs. Please let me know if there's a more accurate one out there, but I think this, you had spoken, actually, yep, right here. Oh, maybe the one in the packet looks different. I'm looking at what says Newburgh impacts and then will apply in all residential zones. Yep, there it is, eleven, perfect. So you talked about decisions around density. So I'm curious, you know, given your incredible experience in here, in in here, I don't know what that is, in this area. In your opinion, do you feel like the the density? Gosh, goals will directly or indirectly result in more duplexes being built in one zone over another? Does that make sense?
Yeah, like, do, are you asking, like, do you think the density targets as adopted would push duplex development in certain areas more than others? To be honest, I think that duplex development is going to be pretty modest. And I don't think it's going to be, I I don't think that the density targets are going to have a big impact in, you know, how it gets done. Right now, I think it's. The the state adopted a pretty, there's many reasons behind why they picked this number that are not directly, like, it's not meant to be a forecast. But I would say that the number that keeps getting thrown around is three percent. They're not expecting communities to see more than three percent of, you know, new development being done of any of these, you know, middle housing. Of all these middle housing types combined, including duplexes. You know, with with ADUs, say, ADUs have been permitted citywide for, you know, over ten years, longer than that. You know, and you're still looking at. I used to know this number twenty-odd, but certainly less than fifty ADUs. So, you know, I don't think that, right now, we're expanding opportunities. And as far as, you know, will you get enough duplexes in any one zone to really change the, you know, the overall density for that zone? I would be surprised. I would, A, I would be surprised if you'd get enough to change the overall density. And B, I don't think that the density targets themselves, you know, just the way, the way that they're written. And the way that they are set up as regulations, they're just targets. And so I don't think that they would compel a developer to build a certain type that they, you know, didn't want to pick. I guess the one exception I would say, and, you know, Doug, maybe you tell me what you hear in pre-application conferences or whatnot. But, you know, if you do have a larger new development and you've got somebody coming in. And, you know, Doug's going to say, hey, well, we have a density target in this zone. And if you've got this many acres, we're expecting to see this many dwelling units total, but you've got choices. You could put some in duplexes, some in single-family, so it could just add some flexibility for how those density targets are met. And, you know, I guess in that sense, you know, generally, we would expect if there's a higher density target, you'd see more units, perhaps more mixing of units.
I would, this is Doug, so I would add to that. We went back and looked at data from twenty-ten. In our low-density residential areas, we were averaging about three point three dwelling units per acre, which was well under our target of four point four. We lowered the lot sizes from seventy-five hundred square feet to five thousand square feet. In our current HNA, the council just accepted on March first. Now, our historic trend is that our low-density residential is at four point eight dwelling units per acre. So just that change started to get us closer towards our target density. So by adding in duplexes, as an example, in the R one. Is that, again, still the target is four point four, but it might start to push us up maybe closer to, you know, four point nine. Or five dwelling units per acre. Again, the four point four is only a target, you can go above the target.
Right.
And there's no problem with that, as long as you can meet all the other standards in the code.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's fun to think through, you know, what the impacts could be.
Yeah, well, that would be the the hope, because, I mean, my, I have dual thoughts. One is, it sounds like this could help meet a significant need in Newburgh, right? And you've articulated a community feedback being we need more options that are at the high-end. Single household detached options. So as part of this, like, three percent feels so small. And wonders what other levers or mechanisms we we have at our control. That might incentivize more than a three percent increase to meet what seems to be, in my opinion, more than like three percent of the population that has this need.
That's where I'll jump in here, that's where Doug has a list of forty-nine items, you know, and as Elizabeth said. None, you know, again, ADUs, you get a couple a year, here you may get three percent, but it's unfortunately, there's no. none, you know, again, ADUs, you get a couple a year. Here you may get three percent, but it's unfortunately, there's no magic wand that we've said a million times, but that's, but yeah, anyway.
Yeah, it's definitely silver buckshot, not silver. And just one thing also about that three percent is, you know, the HNA has projections about how much housing can be accommodated in the low and medium and high. And this is three percent on top of that. So, you know, there are already some of these middle housing types factored into your HNA. And it's just, you know, there are really fascinating and complex reasons, you know, why they picked this number and what it's for. But just to say that they're not expecting this to be a boost of, of more than that, particularly, you know, when you think of, there's been a lot of talk about infill and you start thinking about like, oh, well, will my, will the house next door to me turn into a duplex overnight? Well, no. It's a short answer, right? Like it will be very slow and gradual, particularly in those infill settings.
Commissioner Musala, if I could just add too, I think that you know, the perception that the three percent isn't a lot is probably correct just because there are so many little hurdles to the infill, you know, to what the existing structure is, what the existing mechanics are of the neighborhood and everything. So I think some of the concerns expressed like with the parking is going to be a big issue and everything are probably a little bit overblown, just because it's, it's something that market factors, you know, are naturally going to be a part of and everything, but going forward, that it's not going to be, like you said, explosive overnight while the neighborhood's all full of duplexes, that it's going to be something that people will get accustomed to as it comes along and just infills the neighborhood a little bit.
Yeah, I joked there's, you know, I don't think there's such thing as a duplex ferry that goes around and turns overnight, so.
Commissioner Capri had a couple of photos. Commissioner, would you like to share those with the council and the planning commission? If so, Sue can turn on that PowerPoint and you can talk to your pictures.
Sure. Okay, this is a development right off ninety nine issue. It's the second light, it's right across from that New Hampton Bay Hotel, that light. And this street that I'm showing is kind of the main one going in. And all of these units on the right hand side of the picture are all connected and they're all single driveways, but they have a sidewalk. And then on the other side of the street, there's on-street parking. I happened to talk to several of the people that live there and it's a very close community, but they do have problems with parking even on the street. So then if you go to the next one, the next, yeah, this one. So then you go down this side and it's kind of back behind the, that main street. All of these houses, single-family residences have one parking place and they have no sidewalks. And they have no on-street parking. So it's really feels dangerous. I, I wrote a note in my letter that we were driving down it and a dog ran out, the guy ran out. There's no kind of safety buffer there. Okay, so then if you go on to the next ones, that's on down the street still. And then go ahead down to the other one. Then there's this, this road goes, kind of wraps around it and goes back a turn around and back to the highway. And it is constantly on both sides of the road filled with cars. So all I'm kind of getting at is that I just am really concerned when you're putting in these single car garages. And I know for a fact that most people, like the people I talked to, they all have two cars and they have to juggle. And a lot of the people on that little street where there's no safety net at all, they park a second car over here, our guest park here. And so it's, it's really, really packed all the time. So I'm just hoping that there's something in the planning that allows for on-street parking and sidewalks. I guess that's kind of the bottom line for me. Go ahead, Doug.
Okay. So as Elizabeth had mentioned earlier in her presentation is that the state under their model code was encouraging no off-street parking for duplexes. But the administrative rule says that a jurisdiction can require up to one. And so the citizens advisory committee said one per parking, one parking space per unit, so if a duplex, as she mentioned, Elizabeth mentioned, you get two. So that's why we were then also then looking at how the driveways work. And so if you have that shared driveway configuration that Elizabeth showed, that's one model. If you wanted to have separate driveways, instead of having that forty feet, we're going down to twenty two, so we can get that on-street parking. I think it's also incumbent is when development does occurs that we, and we do this currently with our detached single family with our skinnier homes and narrower lots, is, you know, try to look at where driveway spacings are going to be so we can create some of those on-street parking spaces. But it gets down to that age old thing. Do we design our cities for cars or do we design our cities for people? And where do you blend and balance those two competing issues at the same time? We're a rural community. We are dependent on cars. As we've talked about in some of the planning commission briefings is that we do not have a robust transit system. We're not Trimat, we're not chariots, we're not the lame transit district and so forth. And so people still have to get into their cars to go get their groceries, to get their medical services, to go to work, whatever they may be.
I think those particular neighborhoods would, would be held by some sidewalks too, that like, like some pretty cramped front spaces there.
And one of the things we require is, we do require sidewalks. So yeah, you wouldn't see a development in Newburgh where we didn't have sidewalks. Even where we have PUDs, when if you have over fifty units and you can have a private street, we still require sidewalks. So we got to be able to move people around multimodal. How do you move in your car? How do you move on foot? How do you move on your bike?
All right, folks, other, other questions? You know, Elizabeth, I just have one and this is, you had mentioned that you're going to, that you're going to recommend that up to thirty five feet in, I guess, R two. And then, but the other one, I, I don't know, maybe I missed it, but there was also, I think, a notion of reducing R three lot size to twenty five hundred or two thousand. Will that also be a part of this recommendation or will that?
Yes, yes. And there's sort of a, anyways, an odd time delay in preparing this presentation for you. And then we did hear from the CAC and so the CAC recommendation last week was for that twenty five hundred square foot. So that's what we'll be bringing forward in the proposal. For your further debate at planning commission and city council.
Sounds like an attempt at yet another silver buckshot item. So there we go.
So if Mr. Mayor, this is, I think important, because we're getting close to the end of this work session is our next step is to take feedback we've gotten from you. You've heard from the CAC. They've held their five meetings. They've developed their recommendations on the entire package. So our next step is to come back to the planning commission at their meeting in May for their consideration in the legislative hearing on this proposal. And then to the city council in June, so June seventh. We'll also be doing a measure fifty six notice that'll go out to everybody who owns property in R one, R two, R three, RP and the AR to let them know so they have the opportunity to participate at the planning commission and/or the city council public hearings.
All right. Any other final comments for us, folks? Cause that's, that's the seven o'clock hour. Look at that. Wow, nicely. All right. Anyway, planning commissioners, thank you so much. Jenna, Charles, Robert, let's see, Sharon, who else? Colin, right? Did I get her? And Jeff, thank you all, right? Thank you for all that you do. You guys do all the nuts and bolts stuff and we just get all the glory. But anyway, thank you so much. Anyway, here, before you go, the, the question is, on the, on the question, the trivia question on burn, it, the first one that comes to mind, here's the clue, it is not the Rose City.
Roseburg.
Bingo, got it. All right. Otherwise, counselors, if you can hang on for just a second, I wanted to talk about the agenda for the biz, for the business session. But otherwise, thank you all so much, Elizabeth. Thank you. Thank you so much, Doug. Thank you. All right, on the, on the business, if, if Sue, if we have the folks for general comment on, if we could run them maybe before the presentation, so they don't have to stick around.
I, I'm not seeing anybody for the general comment on the attendees side right now. Just the ones for, just the ones for Elliot Road, so.
Okay. And if we don't see him, then that'll be a moot point. Then the other, Dan mentioned that item four B has been postponed till April fifth. And then the only other thing is that I think Dan also mentioned this, but for the executive session, all we're, what we're doing is it'll be Dan, council president, Finley and I, just to go over the, the schedule of the many executive sessions that Dan gets to be grilled for. But anyway, that's all it is. So that's, that's what we're talking about in executive session. So the rest of you will get out earlier than some of us otherwise. Yeah, right. There you go. All right. So that's what I got. Why don't we come back at seven ten? Does that work? Okay, we'll see you back here seven ten. Thank you all. Okay, anyway, let's move along. This is the city council business session for March fifteenth, twenty twenty one. The meeting is called to order a roll call, please, Sue.
Counselor McBride.
Here.
Counselor Martinez Blencarte.
President.
Counselor Yerneau Holloman.
Here.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley.
Here.
Counselor Cofield.
Here.
Sorry, I'm forgetting someone.
That would be me. I'm here.
Oh, Mayor Rogers. Okay.
Not everybody else, though. I think we're all good. All right. Yep. All right. The pledge of allegiance, please, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move my computer and do that wasn't really working. All right. All right, it looks like unless we've got anybody for general public comment, Sue, on the line.
No, it turns out it is Will Worthy, the library director.
He may come up later in the trivia, just keep that in mind, but Will, all right. All right. So let's move on to item four on the agenda. This is a presentation, a progress update on the city's Elliot Road improvement project. Before we get into this, I'd like to start with, with the staff report and the update on this. Remember, this is not a hearing. There's not a proposal. It's not a hearing either legislative or administrative. We are merely receiving an update. However, we have decided that we will accept public comment this evening. Once we get to that portion after the staff report, I'll lay out some of the ground rules, but basically everybody knows it's five minute maximum per person. We'll try to do it in order for a maximum of thirty minutes this evening. Otherwise, and counselors, as a reminder, public comment is not time for, for in exchange between back and forth with the, with the commentators is merely to hear. Any questions can there later be directed to staff or can be responded to at a later time. That all makes sense? All right, let's turn it over to the city engineer, Karen Hoffman. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We're here tonight to give you a, our update on the Elliott Road Improvement Project. Tony Bruce will also be helping me present to talk about kind of the design issues that we've gotten through since you last saw this. So next slide, please. So what is the Elliott Road Improvement Project? So we're updating Elliott Road to include consistently marked and sized vehicle lanes, continuous ADA compliant sidewalks with curb extensions, continuous bike lanes and LED street lights to further improve visibility and safety and also full stormwater system to prevent water pooling. This is funded by both gas tax dollars and system development charges. Next slide, please. The council in, on June eighteenth, twenty twenty, approved the preferred alternative that the design team has been working on and approved right away acquisition for road improvements. The purpose of the presentation tonight is just a reminder of what the Elliott Road project is, since we've got a couple of new counselors that haven't been involved up till now. Why the project matters, what's happened since the council's most recent decision, and where do we go from here? Next slide, please. So why Elliott Road? Elliott Road serves as a vital north to south connection from ninety nine W to the Newburgh High School. It is the student parking entrance of the high school and where the buses pull in for all of the sports events. It also links to Maple Rush Elementary, Shahelem Aquatic and Fitness Center, nearby churches and homes. It is identified as a critical route and a high priority in the transportation system plan. One thing to note about sidewalks is that nearly eighty percent of survey respondents look for neighborhoods with abundant sidewalks and other pedestrian friendly features when searching for a home. Next slide, please. Why Elliott Road? Current road conditions are unsafe. They're missing and non-continuous sidewalks. There's no bike lanes. There's no safe route for those with disabilities and inadequate lighting leads to low visibility at night and on rainy days. Something, again, to keep in mind is that the underlying goal of social and democratic equity is that all areas of people have fair access to pedestrian oriented facilities at the same time, at the same quantity and quality everywhere. Next slide, please. So Elliott Roads in several council adopted plans as a project. It's in the two thousand and seven ADA bike, pedestrian bike plan that indicates North Elliott Road as a critical route. That, that plan was incorporated into the Newburgh Transportation Plan and per that plan, Elliott Road is designated as a collector street, which requires bike lanes to be installed. It meets goals established for a little bit, excuse me, livability and development in a Newburgh community vision for twenty forty. And it's been identified project since twenty sixteen in the capital improvement plan. Next slide, please. So again, why Elliott goal? Elliott Road, it meets council goals of one, diversity, inclusion and equity. It places a priority on accessibility for all residents as a major point to ninety nine W. There's some interesting statistics here on the slide that fourteen point seven percent of Newburgh area residents have no car. Ten percent of the area residents are identified as having a disability. And eleven point seven percent of area residences are, are over the age of sixty five. Studies show that lowest income households are most likely to utilize sidewalks and bike lanes as a means to get to work and for transportation. And then roadways without sidewalks are more than twice as likely to have pedestrian crushes as sites with sidewalks on both sides of the street. Some other interest is interesting statistics that we found is that the pedestrian fatality rate for Latinos is over sixty percent higher than the rate for whites. And the rate for African Americans is almost seventy five percent higher than for whites. And in counties where the more than twenty percent of the households have incomes below the federal poverty line, the pedestrian fatality rate is over eighty percent higher than the national average. So designing streets for our AG population and those with disabilities can also help those most vulnerable. Next slide, please. So another council goal is sustainability. So installing sidewalks and bike lanes encourage cycling, encourages students to walk and bike to school, giving them daily exercise increases walkability from neighborhoods. It reduces emissions and noise and environmental impacts of cars. In fact, if you provide twenty to thirty percent of morning traffic congestion is parents driving their kids to school. So if we provide another alternative, maybe we can reduce those numbers on some of our city streets. The new streets are, lights are going to be more energy efficient and provide additional safety. Next slide, please. And then last on why Elliott Road right now, federal state mandates. Moving forward with the project, we are required by ADA to design and construct sidewalks and trails that are Moving forward with the project, we are required by ADA to uh design and construct sidewalks and trails that are um accessible and usable by people of all with all disabilities. And then the pedestrian and bicycle bill, I think this is the one that has come up um several times. It's O R S three sixty six point five one four and it applies to all transportation projects in the state regardless of who owns a facility, where the funding is coming from or the amount. And the law requires that Oregon roadways provide facilities that allow for safe uh travel by people walking and biking. Um, so it does include any new roadway construction, roadway widening, realignment and full depth, full depth pavement work. So with that, I will turn it over to to Tony to uh talk about the next portions of the slides.
Evening, Tony Roos with Kittleson Associates. Nice to be here, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for inviting us. Um, meeting engagement, when we last met with council, uh we were given a direction to go back out and continue to meet with the community. So what we've, next slide, please. What we've done is highlighted the the meetings we've had onsite. There are group meetings and one-on-one meetings uh that we've had as we've been out in the neighborhood, walking around, doing constructor uh pre-design and design site visits. Excuse me. We took to heart that your comment to meet with the owners and have done so. I said a number of times. In addition, uh the social media account that the city has has logged a number of visits between the video that was produced and the website with the with the the project FAQs and project description. Um, the city's unique Elliot Road webpage has had um over a thousand views uh since June sixteen of twenty nineteen with seven hundred and ninety-five individuals viewing the page. So that means there are about three hundred that have gone back more than once. The video that was produced last week has reached eighteen hundred people. Uh, ninety-nine have engaged with the video beyond just watching it. Eight people have shared the video, sixteen comments and seventy-five reactions, uh including sixty-seven likes and eight loves. Thus far as of this morning, uh there was no negative reaction to the video document on Facebook. So, next slide, please. So the design as we've have, as as was selected as preferred alternative is eleven-foot travel lanes, a buffered bike lane, landscape strip, six foot wide, where it fits within the existing right of way that we have, the city already has, and a six-foot sidewalk. In places where we don't have the existing right of way and right of way would have to be acquired, we've shifted the road a little bit, uh three feet to the east, limiting, reducing the planter strip on the east side, removing it on the west side and pulling the sidewalk in curb tight. And the average acquisition or the worst ass acquisition area um on the residential side is about ten and a half feet and that drops down to eight feet on the other end where we transition, we're able to fully transition the roadway away from the properties. Uh, what what does that ten and a half feet mean? It means that all of the healthy trees on the west side are being saved. One of the properties has palm trees. Those palm trees are being saved, uh protected with the design. They're not being impacted. The uh, there's a row of smaller trees on another one of the properties that are being saved and not not impacted with the new sidewalk. Uh, there are a couple uh large, there's one large oak tree that our arborist has said is in very bad health and it's right on the borderline of being saved uh for the safety of the tree and the people around it. We are going to take that tree down and there's two fir trees along the corridor that are been topped and heavily abused by P G E as they've run their overhead lines through over the years. So we're going to take those out as well. At the intersections, we are doing a, we're proposing the the similar treatment to what you see at Newburgh, at the Shaillam Golf Course on Fernwood uh with the curb extensions allow the bikes to go behind the extension and what that does is effectively narrow the road width, which has been proven to slow traffic. Let's see, um at the intersection with ninety-nine, we have been negotiating with ODOT that they would um potentially be paying for some enhanced traffic detection. Right now, it's the detection is by via loops. Uh, when we modify it, they wanted us to fully upgrade their intersection to be video detection or radar detection. And because this is a multimodal project, the active transportation group at ODOT is helping find ODOT funds and ODOT resources to upgrade the intersection. And then we'll continue the bike lanes striping. We're in restripe south of ninety-nine between ninety-nine and Hayes. So we have a continuous bike lane from second all the way to the high school. It's just missing that gap from Hayes to ninety-nine right now. All right, next slide, please. Oh, I got ahead of myself. So what have we done since June? Uh, realign the road. So we've reduced six and a half feet on the west side from the standard T S P cross section. So the T S P standard cross section is thirty feet wide. We've dropped that down to twenty-three and a half feet in the tight spots where there's no right of way. The right of way doesn't exist today. And then in places where we are eliminating onsite parking, uh primarily and only at the apartments, we were able to find three new stalls for a net gain of one stall on their site. All right, next slide, please. Karen, this is you.
So the next steps on the project, you'll see where we are right now. We're in uh final design development and right away acquisition. When we uh complete this this portion of the project, we will go out to bid. Um, that is looking on the schedule, it says bid advertisement middle of or early April. That may be a little um overly ambitious at this point in time, but the intention is that we would um be moving forward with bid advertising later on this spring and start construction this summer. And that is the presentation that we were providing.
All right. Thank you. Thank you both, uh Karen and Tony. Counselors, why don't we start with a round of questions now and then we'll get into public comments. If anyone has a question, please uh raise your hand. All right, up Mike, there you go.
So is this a point, is this a time, Mr. Mayor, that I could uh voice my opinions and my views on this?
At this point, why don't we go with questions for clarification and the public comments and then we'll come back for closing comment.
Okay.
Bryce.
Yeah, um, thank you for the uh the presentation to help clarify actually quite a bit. Um, I had three questions emerging in presentation, but I'll do one and maybe we can go around and see. First question, um I believe in in a previous project, um al- also, this is Bryce Cofield speaking to clarify for those listening. On a previous project, some of the residents um were required to help pay partially for some of the sidewalk work done. I'm thinking about a project that was on college. Um, with this particular project, are any of the residents required to um help pay for any of the costs being done?
No, the the it's all being uh funded by city funds.
Okay, great, awesome. Second, um, I, it looks like there's quite, there, there could be street parking that is currently available that won't be available. Do you know approximately how much street parking would be lost?
Um, I don't know, excuse me, I don't know off the top of my head. Tony, do you have any idea? It was never intended to be street parking. Let me clarify that. It was always intended to be the bike lane and it was, bike lane just never completed. So um there was extra pavement there that people just started parking in. Um, but I don't know that I have a number of how many spaces um are out there that people utilize right now.
Yeah, and actually, it's it's good to know that that wasn't initially intended, you know, given the previous conversation the evening around development and all the stuff around parking. That's good. My last question is, you mentioned the timeline is to start um i- in the summer. Do you know if there's um an expected finish deadline, but before the academic school year would start? Or would there, are we going to anticipate quite a bit of uh congestion and whatnot prior to the academic year?
Um, I don't know that we have talked about construction schedule yet. Um, so that would again be something a more detailed uh that we would continue to work out. We would um obviously try to limit the amount of um construction that was going on during school commute hours um and those types of things. So it'll just kind of depend. We have also talked about allowing, you know, uh the construction to happen like from the high school, you know, south to or from ninety-nine W to Hayward first. People would detour around um in that area and then do the other portion next summer with schools out. But there's a couple of different ideas that can happen there, um and that hasn't been completely fleshed out yet.
Cool, thank you.
All right, other questions, folks? All right. All right, let's move into the public comment portion of this. Uh, again, this is not a hearing. This is just fielding public comment. Um, and again, if if the public comment, if you could refrain from uh particularly listing staff persons by name, um that would be, that would be to be encouraged. Uh, if, you know, again, city staff you can refer to, but please, let's not use individual names. If there is such a thing and if you have a concern with a particular staff member, that can be directed to the city manager. All right. All right, from what I've got listed here, um, let's see, I've got a couple of people on. I'm not sure that everybody is on, but let's start with Mr. Tyler Smith, please.
Hang on a second, I gotta promote him.
Okay, and you have uh five minutes. And again, we'll try to l- limit all public comment tonight to thirty minutes on this topic, five minutes a person. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Mr. Smith, good evening.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to uh point out a few new things, Mr. Mayor, uh to the new city councillors and to readdress this. Uh, safety has not been an issue on this road. Uh, so the facts on the ground don't meet the claim that somehow this is inherently an unsafe road or that there's been fatalities happening on this road. Um, no one here, I don't believe, knows the last fatality on this road. Um, the planning commission just pointed out the need for on-street parking in your own and your own driveway at your own house where it creates problems. This is taking away nearly all of the on-street parking will be lost. Uh, the surface of this road is in good physical shape. That hasn't been the issue. The issue was that the uh opinion of staff was that the underlay to this road was not to standard and so therefore the surface would deteriorate faster than it would if the undersurface was uh properly done. But to hear the residents oppose the taking of their homes for bike lanes, sidewalks and green spaces. Uh, this is literally going to cost Mr. Jane hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, staff had mentioned that they found new parking stalls. Well, they didn't find new parking spa stalls. They're actually encroaching further onto Mr. Jane's apartment complex and taking away the front lot area right near the front doors of two, actually, I think it's four of his apartment complexes, which is going to cost him a lot of money. Uh, Mr. De Haunt is losing nearly his entire front yard all the way up to the steps that lead to his front porch, the concrete steps that lead to his front porch. So uh to reiterate on this, the homeowners will not be paying the city. The city will be paying the homeowners a lot of money. There are three homeowners that have already uh announced that they are not going to um, you know, give or donate or anything their property. So the city here has to pay these homeowners to take their property away from them to use it for the city purposes. So we'd again ask the city to revisit this entire proposal. It's not necessary at this time. It could be pushed off. Economically, it's not a good time to be doing these kinds of projects. We'd ask the city to hold off on this project and revisit this entire project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, um, is is Rajid Jane on the line, Sue?
No, I'm not seeing him.
Okay, Mr. Jane, um, moving on to uh Mr. Dan De Haunt, please.
Hang on just a second, I'm gonna have to bring him over.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I've got him on the participant side.
Okay, uh, good evening, Mr. De Haunt. Can you hear me? I see your name.
He needs to unmute.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. De Haunt, can you hear me? If you can, please unmute.
I believe I've got it unmuted.
There we go. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Rogers. Uh, I'd like to, first of all, thank you for being the voice of reason um during this extremely long process. Um, I'm gonna paraphrase uh from an email that I just sent to all the city staff. I'd just like to touch on a few highlights. I will omit names as you have requested, but at this point, I'm gonna jump into this email and attempt to speed read. Um, before I do so, though, I would like to touch base with respect to Tony Roos, um, his comments about this recent video. I find this recent video most frustrating. Um, I can talk about the number of likes that we have, the number of loves. I can also talk about a a survey, a paid online survey that I provided and I provided the statistics of that survey over a year ago. Um, you know, you, you guys collectively produced a video just that Tony Roos could say, see, we have so many likes. We have so many loves. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna jump into my um email, fast read it and try to get out of the way here in the next three minutes. The issues outlined below do not necessarily go hand in hand, but show the city's lack of respect for the citizens of Newburgh and their hard-earned paychecks being spent recklessly as we have seen many times in the past. We do have one request in the future for the mayor and city council. During this process or any similar public meeting, we need to be able to interact. There needs to be more than just one-sided dialogue. As a result, there is no opportunity to correct or redirect comments made by the city council members or staff. The best analogy is if we were in a court of law and if I only had five minutes to plead my case and the opposition can go on and on with theirs and bring in other parties to basically substantiate their position, it's frustrating. So with respect to moving forward, um, one of my frustrations here is authorizing this non-neutral production of this video, which again focuses on why the preferred alternative is is best and it portrays this matter as a finalized matter and not open to further dialogue. Um, and it that's supposed to commence on the seventh of July. This production of this video is a waste of taxpayer dollars. Um, again, I'm gonna scan through this, but I am respectfully asking that all the city council actually read my email. Um, my frustration here is is a lack of transparency within the, within the administration. Um, and it just, it's telling and it furthers the dissent between the city officials and the public that they are hired to serve. You know, I I'm gonna skip forward here because I want to skip names, but I I would ask here, um give us more than one example of city streets, not county or state highways, that actually currently have dedicated bike lanes, sidewalks and green spaces associated with them. Point two, direct us to the development code that mandates new construction on residential streets to c- to create the preferred alternative, the term constantly used by some city staff, specifically bike lanes, green space and road width and sidewalks being required in Elliot Road. I'd respectfully submit that. I don't believe this information can be produced. And then what is exactly the Elliot Road project called? I know it's not an LED, but what is it exactly? And what specifically are the laws governing this project? Again, we want to see the law and the code, please. In conclusion, it is the collective desire of the majority of residents on Elliot Road that this matter be revisited in its entirety. Sue Ryan, uh, sorry for mentioning her, but she politely pointed out to me that there should be a spokesperson. The street has officially elected me as the spokesperson. So on that note, you know, we're asking that this matter be shelved um at revisit in its entirety and the current project be shelved. So the concluding comments is that, and I'll let you guys read them, but basically if we cannot reach a conclusion, there's going to be a couple of different lawsuits, a couple of them against personal, individual personnel and their personal capacity. And then outside of that, there's either going to be a tort or some sort of class action suit. So respectfully, Mayor, I am grateful for your efforts. The only thing I would ask is that uh several months ago, I wish you would have been just a bit more assertive. I know you were trying to see both sides of it. I know you were trying to see both sides of it and get everybody opportunity to, to speak there, but unfortunately, the residents didn't get the opportunity to rebut any of the remarks made. Specifically about to the city council. Um, alright, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dehaunt. And one thing I should mention, I don't think we did earlier, I believe, if I'm correct, uh, Tyler Smith represents um, a couple of the residents who spoke earlier.
Correct, three of us.
Right, uh, is an attorney representing a couple of the homeowners. Alright, um, Rajiv Jain, uh, is Merrill Kunkel on the line? Um, so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just give me a minute to bring her over.
Thank you.
Merrill? I'm, I moved her.
Good evening, Merrill. I think you might be muted, Merrill, there you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Merrill Kunkel, and I live in a cul-de-sac off Elliot Road. This evening, I just wanted to speak a little bit of, on the project and the aspects for which I'm most excited. First and foremost, I'm thrilled that this project will address the glaring safety issues that this road represents. As a major collector leading to three schools, as well as the pool in the park. This is a highly traveled road by many families and youth who live here and who attend school here. I often see students walking on the road because there are no sidewalks. The second issue directly related to safety is lighting. There's either sparse or dim lighting along the road, making it very challenging to see pedestrians traveling at night. Pedestrians also often traveling on the road. For these reasons, I am thrilled to see sidewalks and new lighting. And as a side note, my neighbor has said that um, some of the electrical poles have caught fire since he's lived there too, so. We are looking forward to the electrical poles going underneath the, um. Okay, uh, yeah, so for these reasons, I'm thrilled to see sidewalks and new lighting, as well as a buffer of green space between the roads and pedestrians throughout portions of the road. I'm also excited about the use of the green space. These will not only keep a buffer between pedestrians and vehicles, but trees planted in these spaces have also been found to decrease speeding. And will decrease the prevalence of urban deserts. Finally, I am pleased that we will be providing bike lanes along the road. Having safe, walkable, connected communities are critical to livable neighborhoods. As a parent with younger kids, I often ride a bike pulling my youngest in a trailer. Because sidewalks are too narrow to accommodate our trailer and a pedestrian, we ride on the road. There are many streets for which there are no bicycle lanes, and I must share the road weaving between parked vehicles and moving cars. By providing a bicycle lane, I know that we will be more safe. I understand that the implementation of a bike lane is a matter of some controversy, but given the legal requirements to have bicycle facilities. If we were to remove the bike lanes, we would need to make sidewalks wide enough in order to accommodate the width of a bike, as well as a pedestrian or someone on a wheelchair. So wide sidewalks. Bicycles and pedestrian facilities are important for people who have barriers to driving cars, whether economic or physical. We need community spaces to be accessible and safe to everyone, not just those who drive. There's been consistent and frequent outreach and communication from city staff, and I have found them to always be willing to answer questions or hear feedback. While this may not be a perfect design, this is a design that makes compromises for some homeowners. Um, pulling the street curbed tight in front of their homes and keeping as many existing trees as possible. When it comes down to it, I see the project design responding to the big issue of what is best for the community in order to provide safe, equitable access. I don't take lightly the compromise this requires of all of those of us who live here, but this is a project that will benefit the collective. Opposition to this project negates the very important aspects of communal rights and obligations that are involved in capital improvement projects. Elliot is an important and necessary project that meets many of your stated council goals, and is wide support from the community, local residents, and the Newburgh School District. I look forward to this project moving ahead. Thanks, everyone, for your time.
Thank you, Merrill, thank you very much. Um, let's see, is Roy Gathercole on, Sue?
No, he had emailed earlier and said he wouldn't be joining.
He would not be, okay. Okay, so I did. So I did speak with uh, Roy Gathercole earlier this afternoon, yeah, and he said he's not feeling well, I believe. But um, anyone who knows anything about sidewalks in Newburgh knows that Roy Gathercole is a huge advocate for, for accessibility and for sidewalks, so. Anyway, in addition to that, um, I think that's it, right? That's what I've got for a list. Is there anyone else, Sue, that you've got?
No, not for Elliot Road, no.
Elliot Road, alright, so, and then otherwise, in your packets, councilors, I think there's a, you have a written comment from Gary and Darcy Black. And also from Nick and Stacy Anderson, who both speak in favor of the project. Alright, any, um, given that, um, any other questions or comments for staff? Anyone? Alright, I have seen none. I have a question, uh, Tony and, and Karen. Just, just to ask the question, I guess. Is, now, I, I, I know the, the optimal is to have bike paths on both sides. Is there, is there any way that you could have a bike path just on one side? Again, not optimal, but just again, in the interest of that ten feet or six and a half feet.
Sorry. We have a couple of issues with um, that. Certainly, we could look at it. Um, normally, if you're gonna do um, one bike path on one side, you would need to be wider. So can we, do we really gain um, enough square footage to make that um, worthwhile? The other piece that we have to remember is that per the development code, and Doug can correct me if I get this wrong, is that the, the. Curb-to-curb width of the street is thirty-six feet wide. And in order to reduce that curb-to-curb width, which we could do, if we narrowed down the bike lane possibly. Would require a TSP and a code amendment, because it is listed in the code, and it doesn't give us the ability to do. A variance or, or make those kinds of revisions. Where, where staff has more ability is in the sidewalks. So as city engineer, I could say, okay, we're in this area, we're gonna reduce the planter strip. Um, down so that we narrow down the, the right way, but that's on the backside of the curve. I don't, we don't have any authority with curb-to-curb, because it's laid out in the development code and the TSP that way. Did I get that right, Doug? He's shaking his head. Okay, I always like to make sure that I.
That is correct.
Correctly. So, so, so although, Mayor, we could look at that, um, if, if we were trying to reduce the. The curb-to-curb width essentially, which is, you know, what is gonna gain us um, any uh, lesser impact. It would take a TSP and a code amendment in order to do that.
Thank you. Um, just one follow-up comment on that, I mean, um, and I think, and this is just for general future comments, not necessarily for Elliot Road. But at some point, I think the difference between an infill project and a project for a brand-new subdivision, I think there, there would be different considerations. And I think we're gonna see more and more of that as we start to address Blaine Street and River and, and all of these as well, so, anyway, that's.
Yeah, um, yeah, the ones that are coming up would be Main Street, um, Blaine, and, and those types of projects.
Thank you. Any other comments, folks, or, or questions of staff? Okay, Bryce?
Yeah, one just real quick, um, do we have a sense of, like thus, thus far, um, how much money has gone into the development? Tony, I think you mentioned there's been some like lining, that's already been done, and some other work. Do we have a sense of what that cost looks like?
Sorry, I missed what you said. Counselor.
Uh, how much money has already gone in?
To the design, uh, we are. Between the survey, the baseline data collecting, and the design, we're, we're probably close to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Hmm, and you say there's sort of been lining? There was something else that you said that led, led me to believe, but I might have misunderstood you. So total, in terms like design and surveying, is about two-fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
But no physical work has been done yet. There was an overlay done, I think Jay called it a, a throwaway overlay in two thousand and fifteen, just to stop the road from turning back to gravel. I think that was the last work that was done on Elliot.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Alright, um, other questions or comments, folks? Alright, Tony, Karen, thank you all so very much, and I'm sure we will hear more about the project in the future, so, thank you. And Tony, get back to the beach, would you? Alright, see ya. Alright, moving right along, um, did any public comment, folks, appear, Sue?
I think Mike had a comment he was holding.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, I'm sorry.
I can.
Go ahead. I can't always see.
So, so, councilors, please, uh, give me your patience here while I um, speak on this. You know, I was, I was contacted by uh, several of the homeowners down through there, I, on Elliot Road. I went and I looked at that project. I saw the, the markers. Now, what I'm gonna suggest is not to throw away with this, this whole idea. I truly believe that we uh, should have sidewalks on both sides. And uh, I mean, that should have been done twenty years ago. I mean, I've lived here in this town longer than a lot of you are even been alive. And so it's, it should have happened a long time ago. But this area is really a small area, and it was never designed back in the fifties and sixties. And folks, we are taking way too much property from these homeowners. And for them to, to come out and, and say they don't want this, and for us not to listen, is, is really not a good thing. I mean, we are elected to. Do the best we can do for everyone in this community, in this town. And so my suggestion is, is that. To minimize, let's put sidewalks on both sides. Let's, let's do the, the lighting. Um, I don't want to see the parking that's there uh, taken away. I mean, I think that that parking is, is critical. And, and it needs to, to stay there. And quite frankly, on a safety measure, if you have parking on both sides of the street, and you're, you're driving down through there, because I drive down through there quite a bit. And, and, you know, the cars will slow down if there's cars parked on both sides. It's just a, it's a natural thing. Uh, you see, you know, there, there's, there isn't any bike lanes, dedicated bike lanes on Meridian Street. There's none on, on uh, Hayward. So to put this kind of encumbrance on the, the homeowners in this area is, is just not right. And so I'm, I'm saying, councilors, let's come to a, a different compromise. And I know Roy, I've known Roy for a long time in this town. And so, yeah, we need to have sidewalks on both sides. I would say, let's not do the green. Space down through there, because that just is taking up, again, more land than what needs to be for this short area. And the other thing is, is, you know, I don't know if anybody's thought about it, but I've seen it in, in a few other cities when I go on vacations, I kind of look at stuff. Is, why not have on the side of the road, where instead of having the, the drains, to have the, the curbing where it takes the water every time it rains. Runs all the way down to the end of the street, dumps it into the catch basin, and then dumps it out into the streams and out into the Willamette River. Why don't we have pavers on the side of the road? So that when it does rain, the water runs off the road, hits the pavers, and seeps down through the ground and gets purified. I mean, the, the parking lot at the cultural center, that is all pavers, and, and the park district did that specifically with that in mind. So my proposal is, is that we change, is that we maybe have a vote. And it's okay, guys, it's okay if we change our minds, if you really feel that, that this is what should be done, and I really do. I would hate it if any of us lived there and this was happening. I would be very frustrated if I lived there. You know, and with Elise, I love the attitude that you have, that you care for people and their mental health and, and, and what stress does. I mean, that's a real gift. This is mental stress on these people, and it's gonna affect their houses, and when they get ready to sell on down the road, it's gonna be an adverse effect on them. So my, my suggestion is, and I hope that, I don't, I'm sorry, Mayor, I don't know how all this works, but my proposal would be. Sidewalks on both sides. We do the, the streetlights. Um, I think that's, that's a, a great idea. Let's not have that green buffer, because it just. Takes up again too much, and let's leave the parking there and let it be there for those people. We need to then think about redesigning. Our other streets as we put in subdivisions. This is a, a good lesson for us to be able to look at, but that would be what I would hope that. All of you would, would consider. And consider what, how would you feel if it was you guys living on that street? So it's something that we can compromise with. And the, the people that I've talked to, that have reached out to me, that have called me, and it's been more than just Dan. And I don't know the man personally, but, but, you know, everybody that I've talked to, I've said, can we compromise and just do the sidewalks and the things that I just suggested? And they've all said, Mike, that would be wonderful. That's what we want. We're okay with that. So, Mayor, I, I turn it back to you, councilors. I don't know how this works. If I was on the park board, I would make a motion and say, guys, do we have enough votes that we can bring it back and we can put it in a resolution, I guess? Uh, uh, and, and vote on it, maybe at the next meeting? I don't know, but I don't want to throw the whole thing out. But I think we ought to come to a better compromise and listen to the, the people that we're supposed to be serving. We serve them. They don't serve us. That's my, that's my deal.
Mike, just one, one clarification, and I'll get to, to questions. What about a, what about a bike path?
I, I, I don't want bike paths, no, because it's taking too much land, and you know what?
Yeah, I can't.
You know, you can still ride bikes down that road, just like there is on Meridian Street. There's not a dedicated bike path. And, and that's a, that's a major thoroughfare. Same way with Hallworth, there's not a dedicated bike path. So bikes can ride on that road and just follow the rules of the road for five blocks.
Well, my understanding is that there, there's actually state statute that requires transportation for bikes, and I think we, I don't know.
But we could, we could, then, if that's the case, then let's not use some of the state money. Or we should be able to come to a compromise and go back and say, this is, this is what we're up against. And ask for a, a variance from it. I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Here, um, Elise, did you have a, a comment?
Well, I, I just, I don't, I don't speak up often in these type of scenarios, um, but I do feel like it's important for me to say right now, um. Mike, that as we, as I alluded to a couple of council meetings ago, there has been a tremendous amount of work that has gone into this by city staff. And by the council that was elected before you. And so we did vote on this, and we voted for it. So all of us have had conversations with different property owners on Elliot Road, and so I'm getting a little. Frustrated to feel that you are, you're inferring that none of us have done our due diligence on this project. So I do feel like we need to hash this out, so that this does not continue to be a conversation to rehash that this council before you did not do our due diligence. Because.
I'm not saying that.
I'm not done. Although we do have great compassion for the property owners on Elliot Road, we also see the benefits of the project. So I do think it's important that you, that you do recognize that we have in fact, done a ton of work on this, and city staff has as well.
Anyone else? Any other, any other comments?
I mean, you can respond to what I just said.
Yep.
I'm not, I'm not saying that you, that, that you guys haven't done any work at all. I'm saying that, that we need to take another look. It's okay to take another look. And, and listen to the people, the majority of them down through there, do not want what you guys voted for. And so I'm saying, let's do what we can to compromise, and let's put ourselves in their place. How would we feel? Would we want somebody to compromise and come up with the idea that I just came up with? That's all I'm asking. I, 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 you know, I've made, I've been on lots of different boards. And I've made and changed my, my mind and my decision. After I've thought about it, after I've looked at it, after other people have made comments that I thought about. After I've thought about it, after I've looked at it, after other people have made comments that I thought about, went, hmm. And talked to people that was going to impact? Well, yes, absolutely. I'm not anyway inferring that you didn't do your job. I, I'm, I'm just saying, let's take another look because the people don't like the decision. So if they don't like the decision, let's do, we can do that to help them. And, and come up to a better decision. That's all I'm saying.
All right. Any other comments, folks? Go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Mike, where you, what data you're using to say the majority of people that live around there? Because I'm kinda keeping track of public comment and the emails that we're getting. And I don't see that there's a majority one way or the other. Um, and so I'm trying to figure out, because we know that it's gonna impact five homes. Um, but I know there's a lot more than just five homes that are impacted by all those streets. So I'm trying to figure out how exactly you're running the data to, to figure that the majority think this project is not beneficial to the community at large.
Well, if you, if you look at the names that was turned in back, uh, last year, there was a lot of people that didn't, that didn't like it. And, and again, I've had, uh, several people and I know, I know one person on, on that street that is a personal friend of mine. And, you know, I've talked to them and said, how do you feel about it? And they've told me what their other neighbors have said to them. So that's where I'm getting it, besides the people that have contacted me personally.
And any other comments, folks? Uh, Bryce?
Yeah, obviously he's a newer counselor, wasn't here when the decision was made back in June. Um, so just wanna speak more to things that I'm noticing. One, um, I hear you using like, uh, Mike, a lot of language of listening. And I think at least twice now, there has been a claim that city council is not listening or has not listened. And, um, part of me wonders if there can exist a reality where there is listening, there's deep listening, and there is still a decision made, right? Taking into account listening, but not necessarily being fully aligned with what certain people would be saying, right? So I think in some ways it might be problematic to assume that because council made a decision, that it means they didn't listen. Because rather you can both listen and still come to a differing conclusion. I think that reality can, can occur. Second thought, compromising, of course, right, is, is the name of the game. I mean, it's part of what we do. Um, and, you know, I, I would, there are a number of questions that I'll, I'll probably hold for later. But it's striking to me, you know, that you're wanting us to compromise. Yet when Rick had put out thoughts about, okay, well, what about bike lanes? You were very quick to be like, no, right? And so within the spirit of compromising, I wonder if, you know, that might be something that, um, could be, could be considered, right? Again, in my mind, bike lanes are absolutely necessary. And yes, a really good question, like, what if you live there, right? Perspective taking is brilliant, right? And I'm sure I'd probably feel some sort of way. And I think about kids who ride their bikes. I absolutely do not want my child riding a bike on that street without bike lane. That seems unsafe. And just because a kid hasn't been hit yet, doesn't mean that we don't have an obligation to protect kids that are riding their bikes on that street, right? So I think perspective also requires me to consider those who would use that for school and other purposes. Um, if that, if that makes sense.
Uh, Jules?
Yeah, I mean, as a person who grew up in neighbor, with a father who worked late night shifts, who was the only driver in the house and had to, um, attend school events and walk through that, through there. And we had to walk like two miles to know that we could have easily been hit by a car, the lights were dark, there was no sidewalk. And we did this for, what, all the way from kinder to high school, whenever there was an event for myself or one of my siblings. So we have to cater and change as time comes, especially with the statistics that Karen was talking about. You see that our, a lot of folks in our community need that. And I know it's not convenient. I know it's not always the best. But I think we have to see the reality in the situation, not just for our direct benefit, but for the benefit of, of our whole community. And similar to Elise, for me, it's not easy to sometimes speak up on these type of things. But it's necessary. And I might be the villain here, um, who votes completely in favor for the sidewalk. But I know that there's a lot of children in this community that are going to benefit from this.
Thank you, Jules. Anyone else? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor? If, if, if I may just, um, add, just from a procedural standpoint, um, I know that, I understand that Council McBride, uh, raised, uh, some questions about kind of how, um, the discussion would work or play out. And, um, and I know that we've got some, um, individuals that are new to the council. So the, the general rule is that, uh, a current council, and, and there are some exceptions, but a current council is not necessarily, um, bound by the, uh, decisions of the previous council. But what it would take, um, to, um, you know, go back on a, on a decision that, that the council has made is, uh, in this particular instance, uh, it would require a, a motion, um, to rescind the authority that was given to proceed under the prior resolution. And it's followed by a second, um, and, and a, and a majority vote, um, of, of the council here, uh, in order to, in order to do that, just from a, from a procedural standpoint.
All right, James, thank you. Thank you very much. So the procedural part. You know, I'll just say this, I, and again, I, I don't wanna create more work for, for, um, city staff and for the consultants. And, and for me, as from whatever people are saying is, I, I mean, I, I can't not see sidewalks on each side and bike lane, a bike lane even, if it had to be. That would be the minimum for me. And for, yeah, all my kids went to Newburgh High, the whole thing. So that would be the minimum for me. Now, if there was a way to do that, I know Karen has already said potentially, why not? The only thing that I would revisit is if there was a way, and if it made any sense, and I'm not saying it does, to have a bike lane on one side. And whether that does any more compromise. Now, again, it may be against the TSP, it may be against every, and it may be against the rules of biking, for all I know. But it, again, it's the attempt at compromise, but, but I, I, yeah, that's about as far as I can go.
I, I had a question, you know, as we're thinking, sorry, did I cut you off, Stephanie? I'm taking up space. You should go if you had, oh, no, okay. Um, Karen, I don't know if this question is for you. Um, but Merrill had mentioned something about green space and that being something that would be a deterrent to speeding, which I think is dope. We don't want, you know, people to be speeding on these roads anyway. Um, but are there other, um, sort of rationale as to that green space? Outside of, you know, trees are good, green space is good for the, all these sorts of things, of course are true. But practically speaking, um, could you maybe elaborate on some of that?
Uh, practically speaking, the green space does a couple of things. It, it, obviously it aesthetics, right? It looks, it looks nicer when you have green space and trees. Um, it also, excuse me, allows for, um, water to infiltrate to a certain extent. Um, so it's not completely, um, hard surface in those locations. The other thing it does, it also allows spaces for things like fire hydrants and street signs and those kinds of things, so they're not in the sidewalk. Um, which is why when we do a curb sites, side, curb tight sidewalk, we require it to be six feet wide instead of five. Because all of a sudden, you've got, you've got mailboxes, you've got, you know, all these other things within that sidewalk. So those are the kinds of things that impact and can go into that green space area if it exists. So, um, and then, yeah, as we, Tony noted, um, trees, anything vertical like that helps, um, slow people down because all of a sudden they're not seeing a wide open space. You know, they're seeing things, um, that they have to pay more attention to, so they tend to slow down. Uh, and as Counselor McBride pointed out, parked cars do do the same thing.
Makes sense. Okay, other, other comments, folks? All right, well, maybe I can address this question to Dan then. Um, Dan, and again, this is just if, if the council wanted to do this. I mean, is it worth trying to direct time to see if it can be further reduced in some way? Again, I made the suggestion about one, one lane, uh, for the bikes path. Is it, I mean, what do you think? Or is it just gonna be an instant no and it's not worth the staff time?
And I, I don't know if you want me to, to go, or it looks like, uh, Counselor, you're at home and raised your hand. I don't know.
Go ahead, Elise.
Well, if I, someone can correct me on the timeline here. But if I remember correctly, we actually did delay the vote on this for this exact conversation that ended up happening around compromise. And we did not reach a compromise. So I would like, if we are going to do that and further have a conversation. So Mike, just to bring you up to speed on this, myself, Rick, and I believe one other person, we're not comfortable making a vote. And we delayed the vote and had, and gave more time for Karen to have a town hall with the people on the, on Elliott Road, and a compromise was not reached. So I would like to know if we're going to do that again, what is our, what are we trying to get to? What is the compromise, Mike, that you think that we're trying to get to by, again, delaying the process?
I would hope that, and the people that I've talked to, I would hope that we would just do the sidewalks, that, um, we would, uh, do the lights, not do the green space, keep the parking, and not have any bicycle paths at all. If you, if, if, if we have to go with a bicycle path, then I, I would go along with, uh, with Mayor's suggestion of the bicycle path on the east side of the road. And, and, and that would be my compromise. That would be the thing that I believe, I believe probably the residents would, would agree to that.
Can we ask Karen, and did, was that conversation a part? I, I, I would like to, was that part of the conversation that was had when we did have an additional conversation about this? Or what was the proposal of compromise?
Uh, I would have to go back and, and pull a different, couple of different, you know, options that we came up with. My concern is if we still have parking and we have a bike lane, I'm not sure we've narrowed anything down. So i- if we're looking at a compromise, you can't have both. Um, if, if, if the goal is to narrow the, the impacts of the road, does that, does that make sense? So, um, uh, you know, we can certainly go look at other options. I don't think we ever looked at an option of completely removing bike lanes because of the ORS that says we have to provide bicycle facilities. Um, and so we could go back and look at what that takes. And, and City Manager Weinheimer can correct me. And, and Doug also about what it would take to change the TSP and the code to allow us to not put bike lanes on that road. Um, there's a process. Um, it's not a guaranteed process, but there is a process that we can go through to do that. So those are just kinda some thoughts off the top of my head.
So this is Doug Rux. So this has come up before in our conversations about the TSP and the development code. And at one of the particular meetings, I believe, if my recollection is still clear, with my old gray hair, is that we indicated that there is an option that the council at that time could have direct staff to initiate a comprehensive plan amendment to modify the TSP and then doing a corollary or companion development code. Staff was not provided that direction. The other thing that had come up in the past is that property owners could make an application to amend the comprehensive plan and the development code. And that has not happened. Then we get into, as Karen mentioned earlier, about this curb to curb width component, which is fixed. City engineer has a latitude on the backside of the curb. But our major collector roadways, uh, are not supposed to have parking. So that then leads you back again to the TSP and now are you reclassifying the roadway? Uh, so that's, there's process and there's data analysis and everything that has to be gathered in order to do those things. There, again, there are processes. Uh, but I just wanted to remind everybody, we've had those conversations in the past.
And I apologize if, if, you know, Karen, if one of the options that was presented way back when, again, the memory, was bike path only on one side. Um, I don't remember if it was or not. It just came to me recently. Again, I'm not trying to agitate it. It's just one more thought. Um, and, you know, that's it. But it really becomes a question of, you know, I think to me, I, again, like I said, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sleep well at night if there's not sidewalks on either side and a bike path. Sorry. I just, I can't, I can't do it. But if there's a way to accommodate those things and make it less impactful, um, great. But, but we may have already been down this road. So anyway, Stephanie?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm not against compromise. But my recollection is, we did look at one that had just the bike lane on one side. And the problem became that it came up onto the sidewalk. There was some, there was some stuff there that just didn't look for safety reasons to us that seemed to fit what we needed there. And, um, so I, I don't think anyone's opposed to compromise. Um, the problem I, I think I see is that there is going to be changes on this road and we recognize that they impact the homeowners. Um, and there isn't any real way to not impact homeowners because there's lots of traffic down that road. Um, and I think, I, I feel like staff has done a lot to try to get to some kind of compromise to do this. Um, and has been met with, with a lot of resistance at each turn. And it really is important that our kids can safely get to school. There's three schools there. There's a Head Start program on the, uh, behind, um, those schools. There's just, this road impacts the community as a whole with three huge schools there. Um, and I think, looking at it just about the impact of the homeowners, sort of narrows our view of how this, how this really does impact our community as a whole.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, Bryce?
Yeah, um, y'all can blame me for being from LA, uh, so I'll take that. Um, but part of it is looking back at this slide, uh, that has the project design. And it looks like there's about 12, 12 feet total of green space. Um, I'm with you, Rick, that there needs to be sidewalks for sure in a bike lane. Part of me also thinks like there needs to be two. Now, I don't bike, like, I probably should. I would love to talk to people who do bike. But in my mind, if you have one lane and someone's biking one way and the other is biking another way, someone's gonna have to swerve, right? And I would feel real bad if that one person has to swerve at the wrong time, right? Again, I don't know, maybe more experienced bikers are like, no, that's like not really an issue. I'm sure someone's thought through single bike lanes. But my mind logically doesn't see how that significantly reduces risk to our kids that are riding their bikes, right? And so in, with that being said, like, I would feel very passionately about maintaining two bike lanes. Now, and this is going back to my, you know, being from LA where it's like the concrete jungle. Like, I hear you, Karen, like, we need to be mindful of, uh, was it stormwater and drainage? I'm not particularly well versed. I love trees. I think they're important. I don't want stop signs and stuff in the middle of the road to now have our kids hit them with their handlebars. I did that once. It was terrible. So that, so that, that needs to be handled. But I don't know if we need a full 12 feet necessarily of green space. Um, that would allow us to now cut, like, reduce amount of land that we're having to, um, effectively like pay homeowners for, but still allow us to have two bike lanes. Are, is my thought, if that makes sense. Was that clear? I was rambling.
No, that's, that's great. Okay. I think, you know, we're getting, I mean, I think we're getting a little bit in the weeds because now we're starting to do design work and, and you know, and you're right. Like, yeah, I don't, I don't profess to know any of this. I think, you know, Mike, at this point, I think maybe if you wanna make a motion to rescind, as James mentioned, um, you can see if you can get a second and enough votes to do it. I think maybe unless I'm hearing something else, does that seem like a reasonable way to go forward?
Sure. Yeah, so, all right. So I'll make a motion to rescind, uh, the Elliott Road, um, plan as, as voted on last year and go with the, the direction that we kinda have talked about tonight.
All right. Um, I think we've heard a fair amount of discussion. Do we have a second?
I'm gonna second it because I voted no on the original too. So I'll, I'll stick with that and vote, give him a second.
Any further discussion? All right. Why don't we go ahead and call for a roll call vote in this one, just to, uh, make sure we got it, Sue, if you don't mind?
I don't mind. Sorry, I just took.
You know, go ahead and feel free to explain your vote, uh, in a 30 second soundbite. How's about that? You know, go ahead and feel free to explain your vote in a 30 second soundbite. How's about that?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, on the vote to rescind the Elliott Road project voted on and approved in June of 2020.
No, even though we voted no originally, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna, I voted no originally, I'm gonna vote no to the motion to rescind. I think that we've gone over the subject thoroughly, and I think at this point, if we, if 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 Karen and Tony can't come up with a solution better than what we've done, and I think there have been compromises made, so I'll vote no.
Okay, do you want me to start the roll call? Okay. Counselor McBride.
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plancarte.
No.
Counselor Cofield.
No.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
Counselor Yarrell Holloman.
No, and my 30 seconds is that I do completely understand the concerns of the property owners. I can feel completely compassionate for their their concerns. I still also feel like there has been a ton of staff time dedicated to this to come up with a compromise. I don't think there has been anything off the table. And I I at the end of the day do believe in the direction that the staff has has recommended.
Counselor Finley.
No, and I agree with with Elise. I do feel for the homeowners because I know this takes a big toll, but I think not doing this takes an even bigger toll on our community at large.
Mayor Rogers.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no. And as I, as I mentioned, I mean, I I would hold out for sidewalks on each side. And if there was such a thing as a one-way bike path, but I'm I'm not sure that's a, I don't know that that's a possible thing. So I'll vote no.
Mayor, the motion fails. Two yes, five no.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. And again, you know, compromise, there has been attempted compromise, so I will just leave it at that. All right. Let's see, the city manager's report, please. Mr. Weinheimer.
Yes, sir. I'll try to keep it brief. So just a quick summary of COVID wouldn't be a manager's report without it. We have moved into the moderate risk category, which allows 50% occupancy of some city facilities and some spaces that have been closed are now reopened, like the library, which opened on the ninth. The library is gonna open from noon to six, for those who aren't aware, in person and for folks' accessibility to the building Tuesday through Thursday and on Saturday, and then curbside service will remain for Fridays, and that will be from 10 to 6. So the library is back open. Hopefully our COVID numbers stay where they need to be for the library to stay open for the duration from now on. Then we're moving towards reopening municipal court for live attendance and right now, because our dispatch center was displaced due to some renovations that were funded for making the the space more COVID safe. We are not able to open in the public safety building training room yet, but we will shortly. And so that renovation, I believe, is done now, but I I think we had a little bit of a buffer there in terms of reservation, just to make sure that we could move back in and have everything functioning since you want to make sure that dispatch is working before you give up on the consoles and things like that. So anyway, municipal court will likely be back in person in very short term as well. And so we're in the process of sort of gently reopening some of our facilities again with the 50% occupancy. We're just trying to to manage that and still encourage our staff to stay home and telework where they can, or at least be flexible and and sort of be on site at a minimal number of days. I'd mentioned, I believe, last time that we were working on the the budget. Budget committee dates were shared with the committee and hopefully folks have those on their calendars. We're looking forward to on April 6th, having a training and orientation for the committee and particularly, I think, hopefully of use to everyone, but especially new folks on the budget committee. So we're working on essentially the the background slides and some other information. And we're also working on trying to get a website or webpage stood up for the budget committee and some of the background information as a reference guide for committee members, but also for residents who are interested in availing themselves of of things budget. Just wanted to talk a little bit about some other activities of mine and kind of talk about the Equity Task Force. And we got briefing on Friday after the first of what will be five or what are planned to be five engagements with residents in the community. And I know a couple of counselors have inside information on this and somebody may want to to augment what I say here, but the first meeting was held with feedback or to gather feedback from the Newburgh School District's Latinx Parents Group. And that was successful. We got some good feedback specifically around relationship building with the community by hopefully having a Spanish speaking staff member who can be the point of contact and and maintain that that contact to build those relationships over time. Tried to look at ways to make our meetings specifically city council, but certainly board and commission meetings more accessible. And one of those options was discussed, and I've already done some outreach to the school district, is the school district has a simultaneous streaming translation available of their Zoom meetings. And so trying to figure out how to get that stood up for our meetings and also trying to make sure that we translate the agenda for the city council meeting. So at least the subject matter is clear to or available, I suppose, to folks who are Spanish speaking. I'm not sure it's clear always to all of us, English or Spanish, but we do our best. So in any event, trying to be more inclusive of the city council process as well. And then the next four scheduled meetings will happen over the next two or so months in April and May. And so the plan is to speak with George Fox students, to speak with some of the folks from congregations in the community, businesses in the community and the health sector. So more to come. I'm sure we'll get some nice rounding by talking to those various audiences and certainly to start and something we'll we'll need to continue as we go forward. Then really, I was gonna talk about a few other things, but honestly, I think just based on time, I'm gonna kind of leave it there and post the the manager's report. I speaking with Lacy, I think I'm a little tardy on on the last couple of reports, so I will get those over to her along with this one and we'll get those posted. There's some nice construction pictures in this one. And so we've got art for those who are interested and I will leave it there for any questions.
Questions, folks? All right. None. Thank you, city manager Weinheimer. All right, on to item seven on your agenda. This is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And stack second by Elise. Elise. Okay.
Elise.
All right, Elise, yeah. All right. All in favor signify by raising your left hand. All right, the consent calendar passes. Big thank yous to our.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was about to do. Colin.
You can do it.
Thank you, Colin.
There's our student commissioner, planning commissioner Colin Bolick. Colin, thank you so very much. Good stuff. Good stuff. All right. All right. Moving along, we're on to public hearings. Anybody feeling we're at 8:30? Anybody want to take a five minute break or we want to push on? Push on, it looks like. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just we we did not have Kneechi or Williams show up for public comment.
Right, okay.
I know we went, we kind of skipped past that, but I don't have either of them, so.
Right, okay. Public comments are open and closed. Item six on your agenda. All right, let's move on to public hearings. It looks like first one is 8A. This is ordinance 2021-2872, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, updating section four subsection B, populations projections. And I think this is Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Rux, Community Development Director. And so keeping with the city manager's approach, I'm going to be brief with just a few slides. So this is an update to our comp plan for our population forecast. The next slide, please. And I should note, I would enter all of the staff report and all its attachments and exhibits into the public record. So the background on this is by state law now Portland State University through the Population Research Center is required to provide a population forecast for all the counties outside of the Portland metro area. And so our latest one came at the end of June of 2020. What's really important about this is we use these projections for all of our long range planning. So the work that we've done on our economic opportunities analysis, housing needs analysis, public semi-public land analysis, and it also gets used for our functional plans for infrastructure as we move forward in time. Next slide, please. So council initiated this back on November 2nd. We went to the planning commission at their meeting in March and they did adopt a resolution that is recommending that the council adopt the ordinance approving this comprehensive plan text amendment. Next slide. So here are the proposed changes. So what is underlined is the new language. The strikeouts are the old language. So we're striking out the language basically from 2017. And then adding in the new language is specific to the 2020 population forecast. The planning commission did ask me to add in the words Portland State University. So I did that in this particular paragraph. They originally suggested, well, maybe at the end, but the sentence structure was odd by doing that, and so I put it up towards the beginning. Next slide, please. And these projections, we use these for a 20-year planning horizon. And so the old horizon was 2035. The new is 2045. Next slide, please. And so this is the table. And so you can see the strikeouts deleting the old underline, deleting, adding the new population forecast. I just mentioned on the previous slide, 2045, I did put in 2050 in this one, just to see that next five-year horizon. There's no harm, no foul by doing that. And then we have a new sub B is where we were clarifying the table from when we updated in 2017. Next slide. In your request for council action, we have exhibit B that has all of our findings related to statewide planning goals, the new comprehensive plan goals and policies, and our process for a type four legislative process and staff concluded through that analysis which ones were applicable and which ones did apply and if we addressed and complied with those respective provisions. Excellent. And so I will jump to the recommendation, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, and that is for council to adopt ordinance number 2021-2872. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. First, and I I skipped over this, but I should have not, is declaration of conflict of interest or abstentions, anyone? All right. As always, my day job, work for Habitat for Humanity. So in some way, I suppose, you could have a potential conflict if we're talking about more people moving into houses. So I'll declare that. Any, do we have any public testimony on this one, Sue? No, no public testimony, so it is now closed. All right. And the recommendation has been made. Council, any further discussion? Okay. All right. Again, with this being legislative, we need the old by title only, waive the second reading and all of that. So if anyone would then like to make a motion, that would be fantastic.
Mayor, I'd like, this is Denise. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And who was that? Sorry?
Mike.
Mike, thank you, Mike. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of waiving the second reading, raise your left hands. All right, passes unanimously, Sue. All right. And again, by title only, folks. So here we go. Do we have a motion?
Right. Yep, I moved to adopt ordinance number 2021-2872. And ordinance, wait, title, read the full thing.
Title and by title on, yeah.
Yep, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, updating section four subsection B, population projections.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks, Jules. All right. So we have a, we have a motion and a second. And then read by title only. I think that's your cue, James, as I recall.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mayor Rogers. Submitted to the Council for Adoption is ordinance number 2021-2872. An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, updating section four subsection B, population projections.
Thank you. And go get a roll call vote, Sue, please.
Yes. Counselor McBride.
Yes.
Counselor Cofield.
And yes.
Counselor Yarrell Holloman. Counselor Martinez Plancarte.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
Counselor Finley.
Yes.
Mayor, the ordinance passes 7-0.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on to item 8B on your agenda, Resolution 2021-3722, the master fee schedule. And I believe, let's call this administrative hearing to order. We'll start with conflict of interest or abstentions, anyone? Again, given my day job, we periodically have to pay fees to the city of Newburgh, so there is a potential conflict of interest that is now declared. All right. And let's see, the staff report, and I believe this is Dan. Good evening, Dan.
Hey, can you hear me? Can you hear my kids resisting bedtime in the next room?
Yep.
I hope not.
Time to go to bed.
Good evening, Mayor Council. My name is Dan Corler. I'm the senior accountant and I'm presenting the master fee schedule update on behalf of the Finance Department. I think when I asked all of you, I left the meeting following a prediction from Mayor Rogers that you'd see more of me, and here I am. So this is a, I think of it as something of a vehicle of presentation and authorization annually. The master fee schedule started in 2016 and we update it annually. And essentially, it is presenting all of the fees within the city, not not including franchise fees, city taxes, or pass-through fees that we charge on behalf of other districts. I'll leave some of the information. I assume you guys have already read the RCA and the resolution, but in short, the annual CPIU that we have used for many of most, a lot of the fees is 1.7%, and that's from the PLS, I think. And then the engineering, some of the engineering fees are increased annually by according to their, the relevant ordinances. And they use a construction cost index for the engineering news record for Seattle for December of each year, and that's 6%. There's not usually a lot of fees added, taken away, changed within each department, but this is the opportunity for kind of departments to you know, get rid of fees that aren't used anymore, increase fees to keep up with current sort of the going rates. There were some changes to the library that Will had set up. He worked with his, I think with his board and with his team. And I I can't tell you, I didn't, I didn't dig into the history of the library, those library fees that are increasing, but I I'm, I would wager to guess that they haven't been increased in the last decade or so. But essentially, it is, we're increasing a handful of the printing and copier fees and making some adjustments to exam proctoring fees, which I don't believe there's a lot of of that activity, but I'm not, I'm not confident. The permit center fees, there was, we added, I made a note that we had added the construction excise tax to this report, but I wanted to note that you know, that that was added, that fee was established via a separate ordinance. And this, my notation here is just that I had not, when that ordinance come on, updated this. So first, compared to the previous, you know, published master fee schedule, you will see that being added in. And permit center fees are page seventeen, seven to seventeen, as well as twenty to twenty six. No change in police fees, no change to public works fees. And again, my I think the direct staff recommendation is to accept the master fee schedule update as presented.
Thank you, Dan. Sue, do we have any public testimony for this? Okay, I will close the public testimony portion. And we've been given the, the recommendation from staff, council deliberation and or comments. Yes, Mike.
So the permit fees, did you say that, I mean, they were dealt with last year? But is it, is there no change then to that at all? Is that what you're saying?
The permit center has a handful of fees within the planning and building. Many, much of the planning and building fees are by code subject to annual indexing using the specific index that we use, which this year was 1.7%.
So they're different fees than, than what you're talking about here?
The, the permit center fees are included within this, within this master fee schedule. That's, that's attached. Those, what, what relates to that permit center paragraph is you'll find on pages seven to seventeen and then 20 to 26, and that includes the building fees, planning fees and engineering fees. That I believe those are the kind of collection that are being referred to as permit center.
Okay.
I hope.
Other question?
Dan, I don't know if this question is for you, although I think Will is also on the call. So maybe Will can respond. I don't know if this counts as a fee, but do you know if we currently charge late fees at the library?
I, we do have late fees, but I'm not, you'd have to, I'd have to get Will in regarding whether or not during this COVID period, those are being charged because I don't believe they are. I think the library had.
Yeah, they are, they are collecting.
Based on having had a late book recently.
Yeah. There's some grace.
Sorry, Will. Um, again, I don't know if this directly applies to the masterpiece schedule or would require more work before approving, but I'd be interested in seeing what it looked like to more permanently waive fees. There's been a lot of movements in cities, both in Oregon and around the nation to do away with late book fees. And so that'd be something that I think we as a city should look into.
I believe I have heard that discussion in Newburgh. I don't, and I think it was Will that I spoke to before, but it might've been Leah back, back when she was here. But I know that has been under discussion over time. I just don't know to what extent, at least in consideration. But maybe I'm speaking outside of my.
Will can unmute. I think, I think he's been promoted. Perhaps.
Will, homie Will. Come on through. No. Maybe while he's still waiting, come on. Question for clarification, if we end up adopting, is this something we adopt as a resolution? Would that mean that we would not have the ability to more permanently waive library fees for this next year?
Uh, no, essentially, we do this annually at this time. We present this sort of to the council. It's largely, the timing of it is largely wrapped around the, you know, the permit center based on building code, you know, timelines that are required. But we can't, we do have the ability to take, you know, to make separate resolutions in which case, you know, such as getting rid of that fee or adding new fees. And those can happen throughout the year outside of this particular process. And it would, we would just add it to the published version that's available online subsequent to, you know, those individual decisions. And there are fees in this master fee schedule that you know, just as an FYI that are sort of updated, you know, for example, the utility fees are updated through a separate process on a separate timeline, but they are included in here and, and are typically updated, you know, as within this as they happen.
Yeah, this is a convenience vehicle, essentially. We're just, we're taking as many of those things as at once as possible.
Although you might want, it might be a budget time subject. We have time to bring it up potentially. So, okay, any other comments or comments? Well, I'm just going to point out one thing with the, the 6% increase in the CCI Seattle, right? I think to SDCs for probably the smallest house you could build in Newburgh, SDCs only is about $21,100 by my calculation. Now that doesn't include wastewater or water connection, which are charged at the actual cost. So I'm not, I'm not making judgment one way or another. I'm just saying that's what it is. And you know, at some point Will, I know we're going to have additional talk on SDCs, but that's, that's just down the road. So and another side, while I've got a subject of SDCs. I recently heard from another city, I will leave them unnamed at this point. Where they said, and, and they have always been highlighted as having much lower SDC rates than we did. Right? Now again, we know comparing apples to apples is very difficult. However, they are now finding that this budget year, they have a very big deficit because they have not been charging enough for their SDCs. So that's the other side of the proverbial equation. So anyway, so that's what I got. Anything else? Any other discussion on this item? All right. We've got the recommendation from staff. We've got the council deliberation. I will take a motion at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution number 2021 dash three seven two two.
And a second.
Second.
Second with Bryce. All right. All in favor signify by raising your left hands. And that looks to be unanimous. So, all righty, folks, thank you very much. Let's move on to new business this evening, capital improvement plan presentation. And this is Karen. Good evening.
Good evening again. Again, I will try and go through this quickly. Feel free to ask questions as you, as you want. And this is our annual update to the council on our capital improvement program, which is a five year plan. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So a couple of things I wanted to let everyone know. So when we build the capital improvement program, there's a lot of different pieces of the puzzle that go into it. We have the community vision. We have all of the utility plans. We have council goals. Operational needs, you know, maintenance, those types of things. We have regulatory obligations. Things that are required by the state for the different things. And then we also have funding constraints. You know, there, there's only a certain amount of, certain amount of money that we have. And what projects can we do in what ways? One of the things I know I've talked with this group about multiple times is as we're building the pavement program over the years, we're trying to make sure we're building the, doing the water in the sewer underneath the pavement before we come in and pave. Which then moves things around a bit. So the one thing to note is that this is a five year plan and that the projects that are moving forward into next year that we're proposing in the budget are a snapshot in time. That doesn't mean that things can't change. It doesn't mean that you know, in year two, we're going to look at something and say, you know what, this project is more important than this one. We're going to move things around again. So just know that it's not a static document. It continues to move. So next slide, please. So here's an update on the projects that, that were put into this fiscal year's budget. I'm not going to list them all there. You can read them. And certainly you are more than capable of asking questions and, and reaching out to me later if you have any questions on that. Next slide, please. So here's a snapshot of the multi-funded projects that are proposed for the next five years. You'll see that it's several million dollars with the projects. Next slide. So projects in the next fiscal year, East Crestview Drive, this is actually continuation, construction is underway. That's one of the pictures in city manager's report. This is from Highway 99W to Springbrook Road. It's going to build a pretty big transportation link, especially when the development on the south and adjacent to 99W is constructed. It means that somebody could technically walk from, say, the high school all the way over to the hospital. And that's, that's a pretty big transportation link for the city. Next slide, please. North College Street bike lanes and sidewalks. This includes a waterline relocation. The waterline relocation is hopefully going to happen this, this fiscal year. We have to lower it before we build those sidewalks. You will be getting an update on this project in the next month or so. We are happy to reduce the scope due to costs. And so we'll be coming back with a new IGA and a new scope of work for this project. The hope is still that it'll be under construction next fiscal year. Next slide, please. Not going to talk about this one much. We've talked about it earlier today, the North Elliott Road project. It includes, it's on a multi-funded because it does include storm drainage work on the roadway because we do have flooding in some of these backyards. So we're taking care of that while we're doing this work. Next slide, please. North Shaheenam Dry Water and Wastewater Extension. Properties, this is on the extreme west side of town. Properties along there are developing and there's no existing wastewater or water lines. So we will be extending lines from their terminus down at Highway 240 across the, the creek and then up Shaheenam Drive as far as we can before we run out of money, basically. And then also we have some fire flow issues on West Illinois that we'll address at the same time. So that's what this project is. Next slide, please. Public Works Maintenance Yard. We've been talking about this project for a long time. We bought the property next to our existing facility. So we have been slowly upgrading it. We put in sidewalks, we put in some landscaping, we cleaned some things out. The next rounds are going to be installation of a fleet fueling station, excuse me. IT upgrades, interior upgrades, and then paving more of the property. So that ends the multi-funded projects. Any questions on any of those projects before I move on to the transportation?
I'll see any.
Okay. So next slide, please, Sue. So transportation projects. And again, several million dollars for the projects are proposed. Next slide, please. One of the big ones is pavement preservation. This was funded by our transportation utility fees. And in next fiscal year, we're planning to spend about 1.8 million dollars. The roads are shown on that map. It might be a little bit difficult to see. We do have it up on the website also, or it will be if it's not up yet. And this includes crack and slurry seals of roadways. It also includes full depth. Basically grind and inlay. We're doing North Street. We're doing Sixth Street, Franklin and Edwards and Will Lammett are the ones that are, we're doing full grind and inlay, which also includes that we have to do ADA ramps with, with those projects. Again, this is the, the projects that I talked about earlier that I'm trying to make sure we've got the water in the sewer taken care of underground before we go and pave the projects. So we just finished the I and I work in North and Franklin this year. And so that's why we're going to go ahead and pave those streets coming up. So next slide, please. So ADA bicycle and pet improvements. So there are critical routes identified in the ADA bicycle pedestrian plan. When we spoke a year ago, we talked about really pushing forward on installing sidewalks and ADA ramps where we can. So this fiscal year, we implemented a grant and loan program for property owners to utilize up to $50,000 for each program for them to replace their sidewalks, fix their sidewalk, install a sidewalk if they don't have any. And then the council had indicated that we would do, the city would do, go through and do the ADA ramps. Because those are a pretty big expense. They can range anywhere from seven to $10,000 a ramp depending on what the constraints may be. So this year we actually completed sidewalks and ADA ramps around Memorial Park. Which is, was a pretty big win. And then our project next year is probably going to be Scott Levitt Park. And we'll see what the actual footage of that is and how much more we could do. We have a couple of other locations we're looking at. And then we'll start hitting the ADA ramps pretty heavily on those critical routes. Oh, and to let the council know, we've had about seven applications for grants. We have not paid any money out yet. Those projects aren't complete. And we have had no applications for any loans, but we still have plenty of money available. If anybody knows of neighbors or themselves that need to have sidewalks fixed, feel free to make those applications. Next slide, please. So North Main, East Illinois Highway 240 intersection. This is an intersection that comes up a lot at the Traffic Safety Commission. So this is a project to actually study and determine what the appropriate intersection improvements are for this location. We've done a couple of minor fixed tweaks to try and help. But a realignment of the intersection may be required. It may require some signals and or a roundabout or something else, but we'll, we'll do the study first. Bring that back and then, and then we'll determine where we go from there. Next slide, please. Safe routes to school around the Edwards Elementary. So this was another big win for this, this city. We received $122,000 grant from ODOT to implement elements from the Edwards Safe Routes to School Plan. So we'll be installing pedestrian crossing signs at E6, stop signs at E, East 6th and South River. We're going to construct ADA ramps at E, East 6th, South Lane and South River. Ooh, can't talk tonight. And then we're going to fill some, some additional sidewalk gaps along South Lane Street. So this will allow for a lot more kids and parents to walk to school. And then will, there is more to the, to the plan, but this is kind of the first step in that plan. So any questions on the transportation projects before I move on? Okay, wastewater projects. Next slide, please.
Oh, yeah. Good question. You said folks that are wanting to apply for help, what's the deadline to apply for the sidewalk grants?
We don't have a deadline. It's actually a first come, first served. So when we run out of money, that would be the, the deadline. But we are proposing that $50,000 for both a grant and a loan in each fiscal year. If it gets utilized more, we're certainly willing to start looking for additional money to, to provide for that. But right now we're, we're sitting at that and we're planning to propose another 50,000 for next fiscal year. So it's just first come, first served.
Great. And then the other, you talked about ADA ramps. There's a couple of projects and you have a couple other areas in mind they haven't decided. Just really quickly, what's the process through which you decide which areas tend to making those adjustments to for the ADA ramps?
Um, so we'll start with the critical routes. So again, there were critical routes that were determined, which were the main routes to get people north, south and east, west across the city. So it wasn't starting with all of the streets, but the main, the main ones. So so going east, west across the city, it would be like Fulton to Hayworth. Then up to, to Crestview Drive. So it's those types of things would be the first ones on the list. We've been actively going out and doing inventories to find out which ones have ADA ramps but aren't in compliance with current regulations. And or those that don't have them at all, we'll probably start with the ones that don't have them at all. We'll probably start with the ones that don't have them at all. And then we'll go from there.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
If anybody is interested in, in talking through that prioritization, feel free to reach out. Because we're not wed to any one location per se, you know?
Yeah, no, definitely. That's part of my ask. I know that DEI is one of our goals. So part of me, you know, considers what parts of Newburgh might we be most conscious of as we're, you know, putting significant funds into increasing access?
It's true. One thing we did actually, as part of the project sidewalk, I'll, I'll divert here a little bit, is that one of the things that we looked at was trying to find out where if we had an area of town that had a concentration of folks that were disabled or mobility challenged. And they're actually all over the city. So there's not any one location to, to focus on that piece of the puzzle. But certainly, there's a lot of other pieces of the puzzle, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So here's a list of the wastewater projects over the next five years. Next slide. So Influent Infiltration. This is a project that we've spent quite a bit of money on over the last five years. And the idea is to reduce high flows of stormwater into the wastewater treatment plant. And we have, through the projects, we've had a thirty-seven percent reduction in that water that's going into the wastewater treatment plant. So we've done some good work there, which means we don't have to put in bigger pipes and also put in bigger facilities at the wastewater treatment plant. So that's a, that's a plus. And next year, we're looking at doing the St. Charles Street area. There's quite a bit of I and I that's going into that pump station. And so we'll be doing that next year. Next slide, please. Hess Creek Truck Line. This is Truck Line, the Hess Creek Truck Line actually runs basically in the middle of Hess Creek. And so we have access issues. And then we also have issues where the creek itself moves and can undermine and disable the pipe. So we're doing a couple different things. On the north end, we're lining the pipe to keep out I and I again. And then we'll be upsizing in certain areas. Once we get that done, we'll do some flow monitoring and determine how much, how large the pipe south of ninety-nine W needs to be. There is another project to build a pump station and pull that, that portion of the pipe out, out of the creek. And so we'll be looking at that in the, in the future years. Next slide, please. Sawdust bays at the wastewater treatment plant. The council recently approved this construction contract. Construction is underway and it'll be complete this summer. We're adding additional bays to provide covered storage for sawdust and compost curing at the wastewater treatment plant. Next slide, please. We have two existing oxidation ditches at the treatment plant, which is part of our treatment train process. And we did the repair on ditch number two a couple of years ago. So we are doing repairs on ditch number one this, this fiscal year. And there's structural repairs. As you can see, there's a lot of cracks in the concrete. And so we're sealing those cracks and making sure that the ditch is on solid ground. Next slide, please. Wastewater Treatment Plant Solar Farm. So we received four hundred thousand dollars from PGE and the Department of Energy grants to build a solar farm. The what this solar farm will do is offset the annual electric bill at the wastewater treatment plant, which is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And we're estimating that the energy savings will be about fourteen point one percent and a payback in seven to ten years. So construction is underway and should be complete in September. Next slide, please. PLC is the system which holds all of the logic to run the wastewater treatment plant in automatic mode. The current one that we have is no longer being made. If we have parts that we need, sometimes we can get them and sometimes we can't. So we're in the process of doing a study to determine what the system needs to look like. And then we'll move forward with actually buying the equipment to replace the existing PLC. Next slide, please. Dehydration unit burner rebuild. So again, this is part of the wastewater treatment plant. And we have to do this every eight to ten years. And we remove all the existing brick and stack new brick and then a coating. This dehydration use, unit is used in the composting process. So there's very high heats that happen in there, which is why that, that the unit can look like the picture on the left at times. Next slide, please. So the wastewater treatment plant hydraulic, hydraulic improvements are a group of projects to improve the hydraulic flow. There's a lot of small projects that will help the treatment plant. And, and again, just make it more efficient and work better for the future. Next slide, please. Riverfront Lift Station. This project would install a new lift station in the riverfront area. This ties in with the riverfront master plan that Doug has been working on for a while in the urban renewal area. And so it will serve new development. And then also, it will allow for two smaller lift stations ultimately to be decommissioned. That would be Charles and Andrews. The less lift stations we have, the better off we are. Lift stations obviously require energy to pump and have more mechanical parts to, to fail over time. So to eliminate smaller pump stations is always a good thing. Next, any questions on the wastewater projects before I move into water?
I don't see any.
All right, next slide, please. I know it's a lot. Here's our waterline projects. Next slide, please. So the Bell West Pump Station. This is a pump station that will replace an existing pump station. We call the Old Booster Pump Station. And this will help serve development that happens at higher elevations within the city. The area around Bertha School, North Valley Friends Church, that location. So this is gonna allow for expansion up to the north. So we're currently scouting for the correct site for that pump station. And then we'll extend water lines up to that location, wherever that may be. Next slide, please. Victoria Square Fire Flow. Again, there's several projects within the master plan that noted we had some lower fire flows. And this is one of those areas. So we will be looking at installing an eight-inch pipe to make loop connections. Anytime we can make loop connections in the water system, that helps the pressure and helps the fire flow. So next slide, please. Fixed base radio read. We've talked about this a couple of times here at the council. And the official name is Advanced Metering Infrastructure Systems. And what this is gonna allow us to do is, right now, we have operational staff who drive around the city to read all of the water meters. And this will allow that to actually just be transmitted to these towers that we're installing. And that person is no longer gonna have to drive around the city for two days to read all those meters. It will also come with a very nice citizen portal. I think I showed the council that once before. We could certainly show that again as we move forward. But it allows customers to get real-time data. They could log in at three o'clock in the morning to see what their water flow is looking like at that point. And will allow us to find leaks more quickly. So to, to hopefully stop some of those leaks and lower some water bills also. And so, oh, and towers have been installed and the meters are being replaced. We should have pictures in the city manager's next report. And actually, we'll get some online also of the towers that are installed at the reservoir sites. Next slide, please. So routine water main replacement. It just as existing pipes age, they reach end of life and they need to be replaced. So we, we plan to replace pipes as much as we can every year. We have also added into this project the replacement of water pipes that are of a type that will not handle well seismic event. So we have pipes in the ground that are steel and cast iron, which are a lot more brittle. So they won't move as well if we have a seismic event. So we'll be working on replacing all of those pipes over time with ductile iron pipe. So next slide, please. Safe for Reliable Water or Redundant Water Supply. We've been working on this project for a while. Phase one and two are complete. Phase three is underway. And so we will be working on preliminary engineering and those types of issues. We'll also be doing more extensive public education and outreach to the citizens about this issue. Just a reminder that we have one source of water. And if something was to happen to that source, we would not be able to supply water to our residents, which is a problem. So this is looking at an, an additional supply. One thing I'll note is that the city of Dundee has expressed some interest also. So we'll be continuing conversations with them as we move forward with this project. Next slide, please. Water Treatment Plant Filter Covers. So the state of Oregon told us that we needed to cover our filters and our settling basins at our water treatment plant. This came up for the first time a year ago. And so we will be designing and constructing the covers. We did do an alternatives analysis last year to determine what was the right thing to do. The, the picture that you see is not it. We will be putting actually a steel building over the top of those filter covers. And that design work is underway. Next slide, please. So as part of our requirements from the state, we had to do a seismic resiliency. And there were a list of projects that came out of that report that are being incorporated into the water master plan. And one of them is seismic improvements at the water treatment plant. The existing plant is susceptible to liquefaction, liquefaction, ground deformation, and lateral spreading. So we'll be doing some additional studies to, to determine what the right fixes for that. And we'll also be starting to look at the building itself. The building has been constructed in multiple years, multiple stages, and weren't always connected in a seismically prudent fashion. So we'll be looking at all of those issues also. The recommendation was either to seismically retrofit the plant or build a new plant. And seismically retrofitting the plant is, is still cheaper than building a new plant. So that's what, what we're moving forward with at this point. Next slide, please. So Emergency Connection and Controls. So again, this project allows, would allow for, if something was to happen to the plant, we could still put water into the distribution system from the well field. It would not be potable water. We would have to do some other things, but water would still be available to the residents and for fire flow purposes. So this, this project would allow for that to occur. Next slide, please. House Bill twenty two thousand and one improvements. So you heard about middle housing in the work session tonight. So these are projects that were determined that need to happen to allow for the, the more dense projects, not necessarily the duplexes, but the triplexes, cottage clusters, and townhomes to happen. We evaluated the two areas south of ninety-nine W and north of ninety-nine W, because those are the older areas of town with the smaller water pipes. And we determined that these are the projects that need to happen in order to make that middle housing work. And so we'll be incorporating these projects into, into the budget and the five-year plan. So, and right now, we are scheduled, it will happen over the next nine years. We are waiting to hear from the state on whether or not they will allow us to spread those projects out or if we will have to somehow combine and push those projects forward more. Any questions on the water projects? All right, on to stormwater. Next slide. Next slide. So this project is just having some money in the budget. As we're doing, again, our pavement projects, we're realizing that a lot of our areas in the area south of downtown, there is limited storm drainage. And we're having to do storm drainage repairs as we're building the pavement project. So this money just helps provide that, so we're not taking it out of those tough funds. Next project, or next slide, please. North Springbrook Road Stormwater. This is replacing a pipe. These pipes have a variety of sizes. It goes from like an eighteen-inch pipe to an eight-inch pipe, then to a new thirty-inch pipe. So we're gonna fix this situation. It floods quite regularly across from Fire Station twenty-one. And so this project will fix that, that flooding. Next slide, please. So there's some flooding that occurs in the railroad ditch between North College and North Meridian. So we would be looking at what the fix would be. Whenever we deal with railroad tracks, it becomes a challenge engaging the, the railroad and ODOT in those discussions. That tends to be pretty flat. So it's always a struggle to figure out what the right solution will be. So we'll spend some time doing that before we actually build the fix. Next slide, please. Eight Hundred Block of North Guineuski, we have a pipe that stops about halfway up the hill. And we have some erosion that is occurring. So this project will extend that outfall further down the slope. Next, next slide, please. North Libra Street. Again, flooding issues that occur in North Libra. And so we'll be upsizing this pipe to take care of those flooding issues. And then the, the other thing to note is that we will be looking at, we are finishing up the stormwater master plan. And and so there will be additional projects that get added into this when those projects are available for us. So next slide, please. Any questions of council? I know that was quick and that's a lot. You know, it's, as I was putting it together, I realized that we're doing like fifty million dollars worth of projects in the next five years, which is quite a feat and an accomplishment. So I want to give a kudos to all the public work staff and the engineering staff that helped make that occur.
All right, thank you, Karen. Stephanie.
Yeah, Karen, I have a question about the wastewater. When you're talking about that North College, North Meridian spot, how far out does that impact? And my question is because I was contacted by some, someone who lives close to the North Side Community Church on Hoskins there. And they were talking about how they've had quite a few issues with drainage and that kind of thing. And I'm wondering if that project on North College, North Meridian will, will impact that area. And if not, are there, is that on the radar for a place that needs to be addressed?
It actually is. I actually was It actually is. Um. I actually um was out with some of our maintenance staff last week, two weeks ago. Um, uh looking at that location. And we've got some um curb um issues out there, too. Um. So water isn't always getting into the catch basins, which is part of the problem. So we're looking at fixing that first and then looking at what our next options are. But yes, it is on the radar screen. It just didn't happen to be that this plan was put together before um before that came up. So we'll continue to look at it and and uh decide what are what the right options are and how we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other questions, folks? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Um, uh Karen, so ju- just a couple of, I guess, one comment first. It looks like in in one of the presentation, I think this is oh, on one of the capital improvement program by by fiscal year. It's showing that we're going from fiscal year twenty twenty one at about eight point three million to twenty twenty or twenty one, twenty two to something like twenty one point four million. Is there, is there a re- and then and then we're back at eight or nine million a year. Is there a reason that this coming year is going to be so heavy?
Uh. Partly, it has to do with projects that didn't um happen this fiscal year that are getting rolled over. Uh. I think sometimes we get overly um optimistic that we can get projects done um sooner than we can. And um, you know, things come up, whether it's permitting or or property owners and additional um public outreach and those types of things. And sometimes it takes longer than what we um anticipate that it's going to. So a lot of it is just projects that didn't that didn't finish this year and they're rolling into next year.
Thank you. Um. The only other the comment that I've got, I know, you know, we talked a lot about I and I and sidewalks and stuff on the south side of town. But I think by my count, all the multifunded projects and all the transportation projects all impact north of ninety nine. And is there, is there a, is, I mean, I can see maybe because the older roads downtown or we or in the south side of town that we need to do more sewer work, water work, whatever it is, I and I. But is that right? Or or why am I tra- why is it tracking that way?
It's true. So part of and also part of it is going to um feed into Doug's Urban Renewal um and some of those kinds of things, too. So the next projects that we're really thinking about transportation wise. We're actually, you know, we keep going back and forth, whether it's Main Street is the next one, River Street. And River Street might be the one that comes up next. Um. Unfortunately, all of them have their own challenges. River Street, it may require us to take out those large trees. Um. Which is not something any of us are looking forward to, but they keep damaging the sidewalks, right? And and the street. So at, you know, so those are all the things that we we tend to look at. So yeah, River Street is on the list or, you know, kind of thinking about what what's next. What's the next big one? But yeah, a lot of it is also the fact that a lot of the pipes in that older section of town are need to be replaced and are being replaced. So one thing you'll see with the ibiter or the call it the ibiter, but the HB two thousand and one, a lot of those water pipes are getting um replaced and upsized in Old Town. Or in the area south of downtown. And um and then we have done a lot of the I and I, but we have a little bit more to do. Um. So and we've actually paved quite a bit in in that area also. So we're just trying to spread the wealth also.
Pretty. Thank you. Other questions or comments, folks? All right, the only other, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
So on the solar farm, it you've got two grants of four hundred thousand. So I'm assuming the total cost is eight hundred thousand. Is there?
It's about nine hundred and fifty ish.
Okay, all right. And it's it's seven to ten years is the payback on that?
That was the estimate when we when we put the grants together. Um. We won't know for sure until we actually get them in the ground and get them running.
What's the cost to install it? Is the eight hundred thousand, is that just to buy the panels or is that include installation, hook up everything?
Any other questions or comments, folks? Not the only, and I've said this before, and I know we're going to talk to SDC's impacts of capital improvements on SDCs and on rates. Um. Again, just to reiterate the same thing, at some point, it'd be great to know every million dollars, what does it do to the rates? What does it do to this? Again, for the selection because yeah, anyway, but that I that's an off told tale. Sorry, I'll I'll leave it alone. All right. Any other questions? All right. All right, cool. All right, Karen. Thank you so much. Um. And all right, so back to uh back to the important business. Does anybody know who was it? Again, the trivia question, the Berg with a famous person, a historic, historic national figure? No? How's about Kamala Harrisburg, Oregon? No? All right. Bryce Kofield, I got one for you. All right. The using the same thing, last name becomes first part of this town of this community. Okay. Uh, two pro basketball players. Siblings, okay? Who a a sister and a brother team are the fir- their last name is the first name of this town. Okay, I'll give you another hint. One of their first names is Cheryl.
Miller's Berg.
Millersburg, right? Is that what you said? Yes. Millersburg, Reggie and Cheryl Millersburg, right? All right. The next one, this one is gonna be tough.
Why is this happening?
All right, the next one. The next one. Okay. The two two city staff members have this in common, okay? And it's Allison Seiler and Will Worthy. What do they have in common? And what is the, it's it's actually not a town. It's an unincorporated area of Oregon in Douglas County. Nobody?
This is what I get for asking so many questions. You're punishing me.
That's right. That's right. Okay, it's Scotsburg. They're both Scots, no? Oh, my word. All right. All right. And my final one.
I was I was gonna say ma- mayor, since I have the list of all the cities on my wall, I chose not to play this game.
You recused yourself. And the last one, for any of you who have lived in Oregon for a fair amount of time, there is a community on I five that was always known for being a speed trap. What town is that?
Is it Coburg?
It's Coburg.
Coburg, my hometown, the speed trap.
I know it well.
Tried to go slow through Coburg.
Rick, let me go.
Yeah, all right. That's what we got. That's all I got. I'm out of trivia and I'm out of name with Berg, I think, at least, unless there's some more unincorporated areas. But there you go. We, I've got to read this. Where is it? All right. I think now. I will now read the announcement required to hold an executive session. After the announcement, the Zoom meeting will terminate and the council will enter into a separate Zoom meeting not open to the public. The city council will now meet an executive session for the purpose of deliberation with persons designated by the governor in the body to conduct a performance evaluation of a public assist official. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS one ninety two six sixty two I. Performance evaluations of public officers and employees. No is that, no decisions will be made in this executive sessions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons will be allowed to attend the executive session. We will want at the end of the execution, the executive session, we will adjourn and we will not return to open session. Okay, all right. We will see Stephanie, Dan and I back here in a couple of seconds. And the rest of you all. Oh, fine. It's nine thirty, you know? I don't know.
It's the season finale of The Bachelor, Rick. Yeah, I got like
I had, how did I miss that? I don't know how I missed that. All right.
Now you know, now you know what you're causing me.
Now I know.
Right.
All right, we'll see you all.
Everyone. Love you.
Love you all. Until the next time. Bye.